I'm gonna give the thumbs up and here we go. Welcome everyone, welcome to the last meeting of the city council for April, this is the April 29th meeting. I'd like you all to join me in standing for predilegance to the flag followed by some silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you and welcome. I have a small little thing I have to read and I brought glasses. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you're speaking in favor of an item or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone must speak on any issue not listed on the agenda for today nor planned for a future agenda. Madam clerk, would you help us by calling our first item of business?
Yes, we ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda. Is LaShelle Bradley-Williams here?
Ms. Bradley-Williams, would you come forward, please?
Give your name and address.
Hi, LaShelle Bradley-Williams, 5100 Emerald Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Ms. Bradley-Williams, thank you for coming forward. We see that you're going to be appointed to the forestry advisory board. Tell us a little bit about your background and what you're interested in being on this board.
Sure, I'm a program development manager at the Arbor Day Foundation with a specific focus on community tree recovery in areas of disaster occurrences, including Emerald Ashbore. So I am excited to join the board and explore ways to engage the community in all things trees.
Questions from the council for the council? I'm sorry, we'll go here first and council.
Alright, so you live on Emerald Drive and you're an EAP specialist.
Yeah.
Glad to have you, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Can he steal your thunder?
Mr. Estrick took the words out of my mouth.
That was-
Thank you.
It's scary.
Yeah.
On the coincidental Emerald Drive where she resides versus the Emerald-
So you guys were in sync today, this is gonna be-
Yeah, we're in sync, yeah.
Thank you very much. Other questions from the council? Public hearing, anyone else? Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll move on to our next agenda item.
Alright, if no one else wishes to come forward, we can vote on these items. Items 1A through D were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
Some moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold, discussion. Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items 1E through J and 2A and B were introduced by Raybold.
Some moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Raybold, second by Councilwoman Eskridge, discussion of the motion. Madam clerk, would you call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Shoob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those coming, those giving testimony are asked to come forward and raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A and B together, they're the application of the Storm Cellar for a Class C liquor license at 3233 South 13th Street and the related manager application of Jaclyn Storm. Hi, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you, just state your name and address.
Jackie Storm, 1418 F Street, Apartment 2, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Ms. Storm, thank you for coming forward. Please explain to us a little bit about your application, what brings you here tonight?
Well, we're trying to open a new bar. We want to create a really nice, safe, community environment in this bar and the whole Indian Village area to actually have a home to come to. And we also want to foster the development of the arts community here in Lincoln, which I've done for two years there with music, but we want to do more art and stuff too as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from the council? Councilwoman Christensen?
Do you have any relationships, financial relationships or otherwise with the previous operators of that location?
No.
Other questions from the council? Ms. Storm, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item? Yes, please come forward, sign in and actually do your testimony, sign in as you exit.
Would you raise your right hand?
Sir?
Would you raise your right hand?
I just says not to swear.
It's an-
You have to?
Yes, you have to.
Alright.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yep.
Thank you.
Can you sign in?
And tell us your name, yes.
Patrick Kowig, full name only.
Patrick, thanks for coming forward.
Uh-huh.
If you say your name again, that would be helpful to me.
Yeah, Patrick, full first name, no abbreviations. I am against more bars. I've talked to police officers, one of the police officers I talked the other day about, it was about, I think it was about holding a sign to Panhandle because I was wrongly fired from my job a very long time. He told me if alcohol was illegal, he would not have a job. Alcohol destroys lives, ruins families. When there, when a man's sports team loses assaults against women, ironically that was a woman, goes up 10%. I have a friend that was a former alcoholic, he has to go to AA every night. The best advice my mom ever gave me is don't get drunk, you'll go to jail. Not drinking has kept me out of jail 43 years. I'm against any more bars. When the Grand Theater opened at first, I thought, great, another bar. And the reason they did it though, is because the box office receipts are all taken by the studios, so they have to make it up on the concessions and the booze. I'm against any more bars in town and I know about the bars because I live in the Haymarket and I see all the chaos on the Husker home game days. And despite living here since I was eight, I'm not a fan of the Huskers. Because whether they win or lose, people get drunk either way, this is how I see it on the Huskers. Why would a bunch of middle-aged men, already prone to diabetes, obesity, and heart disease, sit around drinking beer, getting drunk, risking jail time when they could just get off the couch and exercise? The only sport I care about is bicycling and now my bike has some repairs and I'm gonna speak on that later about biking, about laws there. I'm against any more bars, we have so many bars in town already, especially downtown. And that neighborhood where she's at, she said the bar is 14th and South, right? Or 14th and A area? Or is that, where would she want the bar to be?
3233 South 13th.
Okay, that's not where I thought it was, but there's way too many bars in town already. And it's all it does, when people get drunk, there's more crimes of passion, rapes against women. People beat their wives, their girlfriends, kids, rapes, et cetera. Alcohol is nothing but a problem in this town. I think alcohol in excess is demonic possession, it's called spirits for a reason. I've never been drunk in my life, I never intend to be. Alcohol is a big problem in this whole nation, it's part of why gods can never bring judgment down on this nation, although the biggest reason is all the abortions. I'm against any more bars in the city, we should be doing other types of restaurants, more family-friendly stuff. I'm against any more bars in this town and I'll speak more later about laws regarding bicycling at the end when I have my time. We do not need more bars, we need places like coffee shops or rec centers for families, regular restaurants that don't have booze. And ironically, that was a woman, whereas if someone gets drunk, she could be a victim of assault against her. What was that beep, out of time?
That means you have one minute left.
Um, I think I got all the bases covered, so it's five minutes for each person.
Yes.
I'm against any more bars and it's very ironic, she's a woman, women are way more likely to be a victim of assault from alcohol than a guy. I'm, I'll go on record, I'm against any more bars in this town. Officer said, if there's no booze, he'd have no job. So I will go on record, I'm against any more bars opening.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this application? Thank you very much. Madam clerk, would you go to our next agenda item?
Yes, next are items 4C and D, they're the application of Ramos Pizza for a Class I liquor license at 2701 North 48th Street, Suite 4, and the related manager application of Jeffrey Dodge.
Jeff Dodge?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, just state your name and address.
So Jeff Dodge, D O D G E, address is 4631 Antelope Creek Road. We're here today because according to Pizza Today Magazine, we are in the top 100 busiest pizza places in the country. We actually came in at number 26 for single-unit pizza places for sales volume. So, sorry, I'm nervous. We are forced to open a second location because we service the entire city of Lincoln out of one location, which is crazy. So I'm here in approval for our liquor license application for a new location on the north side of town for a restaurant, not a bar.
Thank you. Mr. Dodge, questions for this testifier? Madam Councilwoman Lamb?
Glad to welcome Raybold to Northeast Lincoln.
Loving it. And we do have a ghost. And me and Nate saw him last night, he threw an entire box-
Wait, what?
Pizza boxes across the room.
I think you should have left that part out.
We will promote the ghost, we're having Jimmy the Ghost Pizza on the menu.
Okay.
And what he did last night was pretty interesting, he threw a 10-pound box of pizza boxes across the room against the wall. I just thought I'd share that-
Alrighty, yes.
-on television.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge, I appreciate your testimony. There are no other questions from the council? This is a public hearing, would anyone in the audience like to speak to Mr. Dodge's application?
I'm gonna speak. What I said really about alcohol-
Please, yeah, come up and-
Do I have to repeat everything again or can you just copy it over?
You can copy it.
You can copy it, okay, oh, so-
Just say ditto, yeah.
So, do I have to swear a second time?
No.
No.
So we're sworn in for three hours, alright. I'll sign my name again.
Actually, you don't have to do that either, but-
You don't have to, okay. So, about this alcohol, here we go again, it's our second rodeo of the night. To recap, I'm against any places having more alcohol. Pizza, I can see both sides of it, like it is cheese and meat and people have a right to eat that and it's not gonna make you hurt anybody or drive you to any early deaths or anything, although even that's debatable. Have a friend who's a vegan, he's like, we're the only species that drinks our species' milk. And then I have a neighbor who's a vegan, 20 years, no dental visits, just breast enema, flushing, no cavities. But I'm in our right with pizza, it's not like making you hurt other people, it's just yourself, so. I'm cool with pizza, but not the booze part, so if you want to copy over what I already said, we do not need any more places serving booze in this town, so just copy over what I already said. I think you get the message, any place that wants booze, I'm gonna speak against it. All these people opening bars and pizza shops with alcohol might not be so happy right now, but we do not need any more places serving booze in this town. In fact, I'd like to see prohibition brought back. But even then breweries get sneaky, there was one brewery, don't remember which, it stayed afloat, it sold the hops and the ingredients to the people, they brewed their own at home, which people are still starting to do again nowadays. So, this might come up a few more times, like I said, have to look at the agenda to know for sure. I will go on record, no more places selling booze, we got enough problems. As the officer said, if there was no booze, he wouldn't have a job, except the occasional fire or car wreck. But I'll go on record again, no more booze in this town. And, but I'm okay with cheese and meat, because that only hurts the person doing it and they have a right. But alcohol hurts other people besides itself and when people drink, they have early deaths, liver disease. I remember all the statistics about, actually, I got time, how many minutes I got?
Two more minutes.
Oh, I'm gonna have to look this up in a hurry, that alcohol. Maybe I'll, otherwise I'll have it for later. If another liquor license comes up and, it might, let me look up the statistics on booze being dangerous. I might run out of time, but maybe there'll be more alcohol purveyors later. I should have looked this up before I came up, I didn't think of it. Now the pressure's on. Put on my stuff there, is my stuff there? Yeah, okay. Keep an eye close on it, my stuff doesn't get stolen. Okay, alcohol facts in US. Come on. Okay. Um, let's see here. In 2015, 26.9% of people ages 18 and up reported they engaged in binge drinking in the past month. 7% reported they engaged in heavy alcohol use. Let's see here, I'm not the ones I'm looking for here. Global burden in 2012, 3.3 million deaths are 5.9% of all global deaths. Seven, about eight, seven and a half percent for men, 4% for women are attributed to alcohol consumption. In 14, the World Health Organization reported alcohol contributed more than 200 diseases and injury-related health conditions. Most alcohol, most one kind, most slowly some DS something, alcohol dependence, liver cirrhosis, cancers, injuries. Globally, alcohol misuse was the fifth leading factor for premature death and disability. Among people between 15 and 49, it's the first, and the age group 20 and 39, 25% of total deaths are alcohol attributable. Family consequences, more than 10% of US children live with a parent with alcohol problems, plus you get kids with birth defects. What else is there here? Alcohol in college students, according to the 15, some medical thing, 58% of full-time college students 18 to 22 drank alcohol in the past month. Compared to about 48% of other persons the same age. Are we out of time?
Yes.
I think I made my point.
I'm sorry, Patrick, I didn't catch your, your last name again, would you sure-
It's H, H E L W I G. So if this comes up again, I'll tell you some more statistics. Thank goodness for the internet, to think I predate the internet, there's no way I could live without it.
Thank you.
And it has all these statistics readily available, I wish there not had more booze in this town.
Thank you. Are there others, others to testify on this application?
Somebody back me up.
Thank you, madam clerk, can we go to our next agenda item?
Yes, next would be 4E, application of Cero Cider for the addition of an outdoor area measuring 30 feet by 8 feet to their licensed premise at 1746 N Street. Do you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you, just state your name and address.
My name is Eric Layden, I live at 2234 Woodscrest Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Layden, tell us a little bit about your application, what brings you here tonight?
We are looking to put in some outdoor seating on private property at our tasting room and production facility at 18th and N.
I understand, thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this agenda item about outdoor seating at an existing establishment? Anyone coming forward?
Okay, we'll go on to 4F, application of rail yard entertainment for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 356 feet by 230 feet at the rail yard at 350 Canopy Street, 601 R Street on Saturday, May 18th, from 2:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
Madam clerk? Do you need, no swearing in on this part?
Yep.
Just, just no swearing in, just say your name and address for the record.
Jacob Potts, 1820 Fletcher Avenue. We're looking to open up the street and have bars and, well not bars, but little kiosks and people to be able to walk and go out Canopy Street.
Okay, so you're getting a special designation, so you can extend the area in the rail yard for use for entertainment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from the council regarding Councilwoman Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Potts. Clarification, who do you represent?
Rail Yard Entertainment, which I work for Comcast Spectacor, which is-
That, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, I already answered it, go ahead.
So that oversees the entertainment at the Pinnacle Bank Arena and-
No, no, not Pinnacle Bank, just the rail yard outside area.
And I see that we've got a motion to amend that would add Gate 25 on this special designation permit?
Yes, it should be on there by now?
It was handed to us here at the DIA survey.
Okay.
And then, there are quite a few restaurants and bars that have liquor licenses in that area. So who is involved and who is not?
Everybody that will be involved should be, Longwell's, Gate 25 should be, Hero, 88, Mellow Mushroom. I believe Wings and Rings will be involved in that too. And I should, Rule G possibly, which is still Longwell's, but that should be about it.
And Camp, if you flip over the amendment, motion to amend, they included something for us to see visual?
The reason I was asking is, we had a memo that the licenses have not been renewed on Breezy Island or Rule G, the liquor licenses.
Correct.
So how would that be resolved if they're to participate?
I think we might have somebody from staff talk about that a little bit too.
Well, were you aware of that?
No, I was not.
Oh, okay, I didn't mean to-
No, I was not.
Okay, and then on the diagram we have-
Yes.
-the premises, so you're going to be going, it shows, is all the dark black area what you're wanting to use?
Yes, everywhere inside of the rail yard and then extended into that Canopy Street area where it has MW and then has some boxes in there on that street. That whole place will be gated in and controlled by security guards.
Now, could you explain, are you also wanting to go up around the arena?
No, sir.
And what about the parking facility over here that's also dark?
No, no.
So it's just really Canopy Street and then going to what, going to the sidewalks all around the rail yard?
Yes, well, the sidewalks will not be included, they, yeah, the sidewalks will be included in there too. It'll be that whole, the whole block of things.
And the same around the, it says Hilton Hotel, but I think they mean Hyatt down here.
That is gonna be blocked off from, because they are on the other side of Canopy Street, they're not exactly on, in Canopy Street. They are on Q Street, their entrance is on Q Street and that will not be a part of it.
So we'll be going into the courtyard between the law?
Yes, yes, that will be, have a gated off area too.
I guess I'm a little just confused, I don't know if our legal department has the correct area to be licensed. I'll ask that question of staff, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tanya, just a moment, yeah. Inspector Hofer and would you like to speak-
I'll go ahead and address the licenses. Investigator Hofer with Lincoln Police Department. The Class I licenses expire April 30th, so they have tomorrow yet to get their application renewed with the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Sometimes there are a few, I think we have about seven or eight across the city that have not done their renewals as of yet. So I'll be watching those tomorrow to make sure that they're done. Breezy is having some issues with a lease agreement. And if they aren't able to renew their lease, they've indicated that they won't be selling, they would, their license would be expired. So they would come off of the SDO.
And I just have a question.
Just, no, please, you will get a chance to speak in a moment.
So Rule, Rule G and Breezy, as of today, have not submitted their renewals for a liquor license. But they have till the end of tomorrow.
And I'm gonna ask legal staff too then, what happens if they don't?
So Tanya's in conference at the moment?
I just have a question for you, why didn't you make-
I'm sorry, but please, there'll be a moment for that, just hang on a second.
You may mean go against my conscience to swear and-
I understand, you'll have a moment to speak and we're gonna make, there'll be a moment, I'll say, is anyone else in the chamber would like to speak, you can come forward and make your testimony.
It's a question, why did you not make a swear, you may make it against my religion?
We, we ask that everyone who speak swear or affirm, which is not really a swear, that's just kind of that you're telling the truth. So we're waiting for Tanya from legal to, I think, here we go.
Tanya Peters, Assistant City Attorney, sorry, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading this correctly.
Thank you, Ms. Peters, for coming forward and helping us get a better handle on this.
Sure.
No, no, I think we'll take-
There it goes.
Wait for it?
Nope.
Three, two, one, bam?
You never get that.
I got it once. There we go.
Alright.
Once.
So I think what we're gonna see is our, kind of our standard footprint that we use for other street closures on Canopy. So you're gonna have the fencing here, either a six-foot or two rows of the shorter fencing and the same on this end. This pebbled area is actually the area that he was kind of talking about, that would be the area. This is Longwell's Outdoor Cafe that's already licensed. It would not be this black around, that's the public sidewalk, okay? So really what we're just seeing is the use of the space on Canopy, nothing else changes in the footprint of the rail yard. Does that make more sense?
So the sidewalk is not included?
No, not this black sidewalk here. I think what happens is, this is in color and then when it gets scanned in, we get-
We lose a little something.
We lose a little something, now-
It looks like to us that you're including the black areas as part of the license and what you're saying is the black areas are outside of the licensed area.
Right, except for like this, right?
Except for that part in there, yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be inside of it, so the, they will also go to the special event committee, they have not been there yet, so we'll, we'll go over all of these boundaries with them and of course staff will, will be out there on site if something.
Well, my concern is, I'll just make sure we have it identified, because this is attached to the legislation.
Yeah, I think, I think it's the problem when it get, when it gets scanned in, that that's, unfortunately, we don't get the color version.
So would it be fair to say, if you've got Canopy Street there with the temporary seating out in the street coming south at R Street, so it would be on the south side of R going down to the north side of Q?
Not all, not all the way, but yeah.
Okay, and the sidewalks-
Q would be here.
Correct.
R would be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be the sidewalks that would connect the two blocks then that would also be included?
The sidewalks running north and south?
Yes.
Yes, and there, it looks like there'd be a portion of this sidewalk here, which is kind of right adjacent to- Yes, and there, it looks like there'd be a portion of this sidewalk here, which is kind of right adjacent to Longwell's and Mellow Mushroom, where that fencing would be. But it would not, they would not be walking around the block, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's hard without the color, so.
Yep, and we could certainly draw that on the application that you approve on the resolution, just to clarify that.
And then my other questions go to, we've got the amendment here that would add gate twenty-five, but then going to the two that don't have their licenses renewed, let's say they failed to do that, and you mentioned Breezy Island has some conflicts with its landlord or what have you.
They, if, if they don't renew their liquor license, they're done, right? They're closed, they don't participate at all. This doesn't give them the ability to operate without a liquor license.
So this permit that we would vote on today is conditioned upon them being licensed?
Correct, right.
And then also going to the event committee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you very much, Ms. Peters.
Yeah.
And now, does anyone in the audience like to speak?
I would like to know why you made me violate my religious principles and swearing, but you did not make him. As far as I can tell, it's reverse racism, because I'm white and he's black. Why did you not make him swear when he had already spoke?
Thank you, Mr. Hellwick, for coming forward. We off, we gave you the option of to swear or affirm, which is not a swearing, that's what the clerk read to you.
So I could have affirmed, is that what he did?
We assumed that you did affirm. We did not ask you to swear. I'm assuming that you affirmed, because you did express it was a violation of your faith to swear.
Maybe I catastrophize, as therapists call it, because the Bible says not to swear.
I'm sorry, no, let me stop you for a second. Do you have something to say about this application? I do understand your concern.
Maybe I catastrophize, as therapists call it, the Bible says-
I'm gonna ask again, do you have something about this application?
No, I was just wondering what to do, I-
Well, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this application? Yeah, thanks for coming forward.
Michael Barton, I'm with Buffalo Wings and Rings. Just to clarify a few things, we do know that Rule G will be filling, or do, getting their liquor license by tomorrow. And as we did for Garth Brooks and then Kenny Chesney when he was here the first time, closing of that street has been beneficial also for the, for the arena. As Garth Brooks, we had a line, and, and the first time with Kenny Chesney, we had a line that, that proceeded all the way through the street, because with the security and the measures that the arena uses, so that also helps the arena as well.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak on this application? Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. May we go to our next agenda item?
That would conclude our public hearing on the liquor licenses, so we can vote on these items.
Mr. Chair, I would first, let's see, I would move that we approve items four, A, B, C, D, and E.
So that's a motion to approve those four? Could I get a second?
Actually, five.
Five, excuse me.
And then I'm gonna come back to the sixth one.
A motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion of that motion? Hearing done, would you call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now the remainder of it.
Then I'd first move to approve item 4F.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on approval of item 4F.
And then I'd like to move motion to amend number one, which is a substitute resolution for 4F.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, on the motion to amend.
Right, and basically this substitutes this, and I believe this adds gate twenty-five and the special designation permit.
Okay, any discussion of the motion to amend with the substitute mission, substitute amendment? Substitute resolution, actually, thank you. Would, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for the roll call.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And now the main motion of court.
Yes. Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Next then, our-
I would like, we're all finished with our liquor resolutions now, if that's something you were here for, we're gonna move on now to our public hearing resolutions.
We'll move on to item 5A, accepting a report of due impending claims against the city for April first through the fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on a claim against the city?
If you have a claim against the city and you'd like to address that, now's the time. Seeing no one coming forward?
All right, I'll call items 5B and C together. They are approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city, Parks and Rec Department, the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission, and the Lower Platte South NRD, and approving a cooperation agreement between Parks and Rec and Pheasants Forever for saline wetlands conservation.
Good afternoon, Nicole Fleck Tuus with Parks and Recreation. These are two interrelated agreements. One is an interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Lincoln, Lower Platte South Natural Resources District, and Nebraska Game and Parks Commission. This is just simply renewing our sixteen-year multi-agency program on the saline wetlands partnership, and we have a companion agreement, a new private partner is Pheasants Forever, and that agreement is separated simply because it's not part of the governmental agreement. So in the interest of time, I think, we also have Tom Molmstrom here, who is our saline wetlands partnership coordinator, and we'd just be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Fleck Tuus. Questions from the council? Councilman Lamb?
Thank you. So, no, my question just was, there is already a coordinator in place, this isn't created, a new position?
That's correct, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Other questions from the council? Ms. Fleck Tuus, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak on this agenda item about the agreements with the Lower Platte South Natural Resource District? Seeing no one coming forward, let's move to our next agenda item.
All right, I will call items 5D through G together. They are a contract addendum with Lancaster County for funding the development of a recreational trail in conjunction with the Prairie Corridor on Haynes Branch Project in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars over a three-year period, a cooperative agreement with the Nebraska Game and Parks, and a right of entry and property use agreement with UNL, and a research agreement with UNL, all related to the Prairie Corridor on Haynes Branch Project.
Again, Nicole Fleck Tuus with Parks and Recreation, hello?
Welcome back.
Thank you. These are four, obviously, interrelated agreements that relate to accepting matching funds and partnerships for the Prairie Corridor and Haynes Branch Project. All of these are related to project activities for our Phase Three. We just were awarded a three-year grant from the Nebraska Environmental Trust in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars, and the first agreement receives a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Lancaster County Visitor Improvement Funds as a match that was pledged for the trail portion of that project. The second receives four hundred, rather, forty-five thousand dollars from the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission as a match for habitat development that was pledged for that grant. And then the third and fourth agreements are partnerships with UNL School of Natural Resources. The first of those is the mechanism by which we would transfer the research dollars that we'll be receiving from the trust to UNL for their, their research on Tall Grass Prairie and pollinator species. And the fourth is providing them access to one of the Prairie Corridor sites for that research. So again, it's the matching funds and the partnerships and activities that relate to that grant that we've received.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Seeing no one asking questions, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to talk about, to testify on these agreements? Mr. Hellwick, would you like to come forward and talk about the Prairie Corridor?
Yeah. I am all for my bike pass as a diehard bicyclist, and bicycling is better than a car in just about every way, my waistline, my walk the world. Cars cost more to purchase, gas up, maintain, assure, wash, license repair, optionally customize. I have a Bose sound system for my car that was a mere three hundred dollars. If your Bose system went out in your car, it would cost way more. I'm all for my bike pass. This will be the first generation of kids in this country that on average, that on average is gonna die, a tenth of your young parents, like twenties, from sitting in those cars, sitting at work and sitting in front of the TV. Cars are the problem, not the solution. The only advantage a car has in the winter here are if I need to get to Omaha, I can bike anywhere in town. I'm all, trails are the best thing ever, or less to have a city with a lot of trails. Where would this trail go exactly? What direction from town? We usually don't answer questions this portion of program. Okay, so wait for it, okay, but yeah, we definitely want trails to keep these kids in shape and off their butts watching TV and playing video games, so definitely for more trails. Sounds like a good use of money. And, and here's the thing, if everybody rode bikes everywhere, a lot more places, there wouldn't be as many potholes, because the heavy cars wouldn't run over the roads as much. What we need to do is just invest in a world-class mass transit system. I have a sister in Barcelona, rides a bike, takes mass transit everywhere. She had a car here, was nothing but problems. Her fiance, who broke her heart by the way, got her junky cars. My dad's first car, all his money went to this money pit, which is like a house. Now he can't retire for two reasons. He's got two cars, because he's an idiot, has two houses, because he was an architect. He got fired many jobs. First eight years of my life, he got, he was fired four or five jobs in eight years, because at that time, we lived in Canada. One out of every three architects is out of work. So rather than take a clue, this man had, man had a one-man firm for twenty-five years. There was no money. What paid the bread and butter money was driving Lincoln to Omaha, wasting time, energy, money, and gas on hood inspections. So, long story short, trails are the way to go. Cars are not the way to go. Cars are the problem. Motor vehicles, mostly cars, kills many people's guns, which the government wants to outlaw guns, but that's contrary to second amendment rights. What I say, and this is pretty hardcore, people say I'm intense, is outlaw these murderous cars. Have good mass transit, you, I mean, mass transit doesn't kill as many people's cars, I bet. Haven't done the research on that one. So yeah, trails are the best thing ever. We're blessed to have a lot, we can always use more. I've backed Eagle on back tons of times, thirty-five miles round trip from my house. I've always had more time than money, but then parents have kids, cars are a little trickier, but they fell into the kid trap. I did not fall into the kid trap. So yeah, trails, best thing ever, bring on the trails. Cars, not so much. Should tax the cars more, yeah, tax the alcohol more, too, but that's not related. So yeah, outlaw the cars, bring on the bike trails, and have good mass transit. Startran, no buses on Sundays or evenings. Well, again, that's off topic. Yes, bring on the bike trails, outlaw the cars. That winner's a little tricky with a bike, but how, what you do if you say bikes aren't fast enough, you get an electric bike that can do twenty miles an hour, you split the difference. It's like twice as fast as a bike maybe, but half as fast as a car. Yes, bring on the bike trails. I will go on record, bring on the bike pass. How much time I got?
A little under a minute.
What? Okay, yeah, bring on the bike pass, outlaw those murderous cars.
Thank you. Are there others in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item, actually, these agenda items? Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Can we move to our, I think, five?
Five H, approving a resolution to limit spending to no more than twenty thousand dollars to provide education on any ballot issue without prior approval of the city council.
And who will speak? Is anyone in the chamber like to speak on this agenda item?
That's Mr. Kirkpatrick, I think we made a change.
Councilman Eskridge, and then, then, Councilman, would you like to start, please?
Sure.
Do you want, I can just remind, Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney, this was continued from last week. There is an amendment pending that Mr. Eskridge offered last week, and then it was moved to the agenda for this week.
Councilman Lamb?
Does this have the amended language in it? I mean, because we had, you had amended it by interlineation, and is it different, what we're looking at today for the second, for a different amendment?
No, what you have, what you should have in front of you is amendment number one, which is the language that was, the motion to amend in full that was made last week.
Okay.
Does everyone have a copy of that?
Substitute, yes.
I don't.
It was on the stack that was given to you, should be there. Five H?
Yep, five H.
It's also identical to what was sent out earlier this week, or late last week, I guess.
And was attached to, in Granicus.
Okay, so we're still in the public hearing, still in the testimony stage. Anyone else from the council would like to speak?
I would move the substitute amendment.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Raybold. Okay, so we're good. I'm gonna, I'd like to have the public get a chance, I'm just gonna see if, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, we're good there. Councilman Gaylord Baird, yes?
I'm not sure that this was linked online on our agenda, so maybe if Councilman Eskridge would like to just review what it does for the public.
It was uploaded in Granicus.
It was?
It was.
You're saying it was uploaded?
It was uploaded, mhm. It's still not on there, Teresa.
Oh, well, I saw it last week. I'm looking at it right now.
My apologies, I thought it had been.
Councilman Eskridge, I think Councilman Gaylord Baird would like you to help us understand what happened here.
Sure. Yeah, well, Councilwoman Lamb introduced this, this resolution a few weeks ago?
Couple, yeah, couple, three weeks ago.
Last year sometime.
And so there, the substitute makes a few changes to that, including language that was added last week about that this would cover advertising for funding, for use of a private vendor for educational purposes for campaigns, bond kinds of issues, sales tax issues that voters would, would decide on, and then at the end, that, and a statement that this would be paid for by the city of Lincoln.
Other discussion?
Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
I appreciate Councilman Eskridge bringing forward this revised language. As we understood it, the original had some enforcement issues, but this, I think, achieves, gets at the same notion of basically providing more information to the council earlier and with the ability to accept public hearing with some awareness of an anticipated budget for education expenses that along with any potential ballot issue prior to the council voting on it, so, thank you.
Other comments from the council? It's my understanding we have a motion and a second already, so we're ready for the voting stage.
Yeah, we're gonna start at the top at 5A.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, yes. So we're done with this public hearing, then we move back to the voting stage, thank you. I got a little bit ahead of myself. Thank you, Councilman Christensen. So I've seen no questions coming forward. Teresa, let's go back and do the voting session for, for resolutions.
We will start with 5A then. It was the claims against the city introduced by Gaylord Baird, so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilman Christensen.
I'm gonna move motion to amend number one to remove the claim of Steve Mason from the list of denied claims.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, to amend the pending claims against the city to remove one of those. Any additional discussion on the motion to amend?
That was removed so that Mr. Mason can be present for the hearing, he wasn't able to attend tonight.
I understand. Thank you, Councilwoman. Hearing done, would you please call the roll for that?
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
5B, please.
5B?
The main motion.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So we're on the main motion?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
My apologies, I got a little anxious there.
Now, there, 5B is the interlocal cooperation agreement with Nebraska Game and Parks and Lower Platte South NRD introduced by Gaylord Baird. So move, second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5C is the cooperation agreement with Pheasants Forever introduced by Gaylord Baird. So move, second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is 5D. Contract addendum with Lancaster County introduced by Gaylord Baird. So move, second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilman Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge? Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 5E is the cooperated, cooperative agreement with Nebraska Game and Parks introduced by Gaylord Baird. So move, second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb? Motion carried, seven to zero. Five F is the right-of-entry and property use agreement with UNL introduced by Gayler Baird. So moved. Second?
Motion by Gayler Baird, second by Eskridge. Discussion?
We do have a motion to amend number one to accept a substitute agreement.
I approve the motion number one. Number one.
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Gayler Baird, motion to amend number one. Discussion of the motion to amend? Hearing no one? I think we're ready to vote on the motion to amend.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now, let us go to the original amended motion.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Five G is the research agreement with UNL introduced by Gayler Baird. So moved. Second?
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gayler Baird, second by Councilwoman Ray Boldt. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Five G is the research agreement with UNL introduced by Gayler Baird. So moved.
Second?
Your motion to amend?
Didn't we already do that once?
We did.
We had a motion and a second last week, but no vote.
I think, I think we're voting on the amended motion.
That was introduced by Councilman Eskridge.
Substitute motion that we voted on just a few moments ago.
Okay.
And we have a motion by Councilwoman Lamb and a second by Councilman Christiansen.
We have not voted on the motion to amend. It was moved and seconded last week, but no vote was taken.
So we just, that's where we just vote.
We're just voting on the amended?
We're voting on the motion to amend first, and then the main motion.
So, motion to amend. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on motion? We've already had discussion.
Move it.
No, he's moved it already.
The motion to amend was moved and seconded last week, but not voted on.
Okay.
So I made the motion, so I'll do that.
So you've made the motion, it's been seconded, we need to vote on the motion to amend, and then the main motion.
Can I?
Madam Lamb?
Thank you very much, thank you. I'm very appreciative of Councilman Eskridge's amendment, and I think that this actually goes further, and I said this last week, and so I just wanted to reiterate, it goes further to allow notice to the people of the city of Lincoln and the representatives they've elected here at this dais. It's true work towards transparency, and I appreciate him bringing this and working to resolve the issue, making sure also that the taxpayers are aware to eliminate confusion when something that is produced in order to educate on behalf of the city does indicate that has been paid for by city funds. So, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Would others like to speak? Okay, I'm gonna call for the roll. Call vote now.
This is on the motion to amend. Ray Boldt?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Yay.
Next, we're on to public hearing ordinance's second reading. Item six A is Street and Alley Vacation 19003, application of Craig McDonald to vacate the east-west alley adjacent to lots seven through 10 Harley and McFarland subdivision and Lot 2 Harley and McFarland's first subdivision, generally located at 2234 Holdridge Street.
Mr. Landis, would you help us with this?
I believe the applicant was going to be here, and I'm, actually, we're not the applicant in this case, but I can tell you a little bit about it. So, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director. You probably have in your inner office memo, something from Michelle Backhamire, our real estate relocation agent. This is what the alley looks like now. If I could have the magic Showb countdown to make the picture.
Yeah, that hasn't worked. We're gonna retire that.
All right. Anyway, this is the alley, and one of the proximate owners said, you know, the city doesn't use it, nobody else is using it, and it, I'm, I would be delighted to clean it up and take care of it. I'd like to have this vacated. His two neighbors also adjoining agreed. He subsequently approached them. They've all agreed that he will become the owner of the land, and he will be able to maintain it. The city has no objection to that. The planning department's looked at this. We have no objection, and the value of the land is $470. We would join in the applicant in this case in suggesting that the alley be vacated.
Thank you very much. The applicant didn't arrive while the testimony was going on. Doors opening? No.
He's back here.
Pardon? Applicant, oh, yes, please come forward. Thank you, Councilman Eskridge.
Just state your name and address.
Craig McDonald, 2234 Holdridge.
Mr. McDonald, tell us what's going on here. I think?
Well, I'm just gonna clean it up and getting it for an easement, for building a garage. Pretty much all that's going on.
All right, I appreciate you taking, taking some ownership in this. Others in the council like to? I'm sorry, Councilman Camp, I look that way.
Yes, question, and maybe for Mr. Landis as well. Usually when we vacate alleys, there are easement rights that go to the utility entities, and you mentioned you're gonna build a garage.
Well, not on it, no. Just so it's farther away from the property.
So the garage would be on your current property and just more open space around?
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't conflict with utility easements. Thank you.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, I, thank you for, you know, proposing this. The picture looks like a mess for dumping site, people in the neighborhood or different places coming, just dump stuff, and you've had to live with that, as your neighbors have. So thanks for taking this initiative, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Landis, would you come back up? I would like to ask you a question.
The question that was asked tonight.
Yes, I would like, you wanna ask it again, Councilman?
Sure. Councilman, if I could respond to your question, the memo indicates that there are LES electrical poles, wires, and pedestals. They're located along the southern edge of the alley. Utility easements are being retained by LES, allo, and for city sanitary sewer purposes as a sanitary sewer main is located in the alley.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. Thank you, sir. Other questions? This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing no one coming forward. Madam Clerk, let's move to our next agenda item.
All right, I'll call item six B through D together, as they are all related. They are the, all related to the Victoria Park, Victory Park VA campus. It's a redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment project amending the CIP to increase the appropriation for the project from 7.65 to 8.27. Authorizing an amendment to the tax allocation bond. Those are the four items, three items.
Members of the city council, David Landis and Winn Yermostead, applicants on behalf of the Urban Development Department?
Yay.
Thank you. Today is the culmination, if you will, of about 12 years of city building that we've done as your Urban Development Department and the Biden administration. And it is the night that has cumulatively the largest amount of public-private partnerships of any day in the history of the city of Lincoln, Nebraska. When you total the three projects you'll be looking at, should they meet with your approval, we'd be looking at $120 million of public-private partnership, a great deal of private investment in this town. I want to say that this first one started in, years ago, but in 2015, we did execute an agreement that was the framework for the Veterans Administration. And the, after the framework, the first project or phase had to do with VASH housing. However, the Veterans Administration, a law unto itself and with a logic unknown to others, including myself, ran a selection process for where they were gonna put the clinic, not once but twice, which took us to, very recently, the second of those selection processes, that the Veterans Administration Park was the right place for a clinic. This is that second phase, it is the clinic. We're talking about roughly $45 million, and the critical piece is this, the developer will tell us, this is the redevelopment agreement that allows them to have a VA clinic at this site. I can't imagine anything more important for the veterans of this, not only town, but this region, than this occur. The people who do this work in my department, not myself, but their people like Winn, who've been a planner there for years, with many projects, the Innovation Campus Project, the Telegraph District, Antelope Valley, affordable housing projects dating back for a decade, they do the work. So tonight, I'm gonna ask those people to come up and talk about the projects that you'll be seeing. You're seeing Winn and Hallie and us, as they explain to you these large-scale cumulative projects for the city of Lincoln. Can I hand it over to Winn?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I have to tell you, I'm fighting a cold, so please forgive my voice. So, we're here with the clinic tonight, and this is such a win for, not only for Lincoln, but for the veterans. As we were going through this process several years ago, we had many veterans approach us and say, we want the clinic in Lincoln and we want it here. We had representatives from many veterans organizations say the same thing. Unfortunately, that was out of our control, but we were pleased that the Veterans Administration did finally make the decision and the clinic will be going here. The developers are here, and we'll come up and speak after, after I'm through and give you some more information, but basically, we're looking at construction starting in about three months' time. As Dave said, it's about $45 million in investment, 41 million in private and 3.5 in TIF. And the reason, actually, that we needed to come back to you, the original agreement, redevelopment agreement included this project and was approved by you in 2015. Since that time, the clinic has been designed, and so we have actual costs, or we know better what the costs will be, which naturally went up, as did construction costs. So, the reason we had to come back to you was because of the increase in TIF. And then also, that increases the amount of TIF for the entire redevelopment project. As Dave mentioned also, what's also exciting about this project is, is if the clinic isn't exciting enough, but then this does open the door for redevelopment of the entire campus. If you may recall, the original redevelopment agreement had a clause in it that said, if the clinic didn't go here, the developers could, but did not have to, do the remaining phases of the project. Well, now that the clinic is going here, the remaining phases of the project will go forward. And when complete, that'll add just about 300 additional dwelling units for veterans and senior, senior, senior veterans. Some of that is open to anyone, but most of it is veterans' preference. So it's very exciting that that, that's moving forward. I do have some of the details as far as what the TIF will be used for, if you're interested in that. It's in the resolution that you saw, in very traditional uses of TIF. Street improvements on 70th Street, a turn lane will be going in at Victory Drive or L Street, and new traffic signals there. There's some water and wastewater work that needs to be done, sidewalks, street scape, pedestrian lighting, energy enhancements, pickleball courts are part of this. And there is, are some funds set aside for, in the future, in a future phase, if you may recall, Aging Partners is interested in moving out here. And in a future phase, if an agreement can be reached between the city and Aging Partners and the developer, then Aging Partners would move out again in a future phase. So, acquisition, site preparation, those sorts of things as well. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions? Councilman Camp?
Thank you, and hope you recover from your cold soon.
Thank you.
Don't wanna tax you too much here. Obviously, I've been following this project closely for years. In the TIF that you're talking about, just to make sure I understand it, overall, the tax of financing would be increased from 7.65 million to 8.27.
Right.
And that includes the 3.35 million?
Yes. Yes.
Now, will the clinic be owned by the developers, or is that owned by the federal government?
Now, the clinic is owned by the developer. It's a, it's a very complicated arrangement, and I wasn't gonna go into it again unless you asked, but the VA is leasing the ground for it through what's called an extended-use lease for 75 years to the seniors' foundation. The seniors' foundation has subcontracted with Burlington Capital, who's here tonight, who has a partnership with another developer, who, and they will actually own the clinic. So the clinic is privately owned, but leased through the seniors' foundation from the VA.
And that allows it to qualify for tax of financing?
Yes.
Since the land is not owned perpetually?
Correct.
What is the dividing point on length of time that needs to be owned as opposed to rented or leased? Qualify for TIF?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
I think Mr. C is gonna help us.
We jumped in there, Winn.
All right.
Tim C, Assistant City Attorney. It really doesn't have to do with the length of time, it has to do with the fact that the improvements are privately owned, the ground underneath them is still owned by the federal government, so the actual property taxes that could be owed on the underlying ground are still exempt, but the improvements built on that land are privately owned, and that's why they're subject to the property taxes. that could be owed on the underlying ground are still exempt, but the improvements built on that land are privately owned, and that's why they're subject to the property taxes.
So, the assessor will just look at the capital improvements, but not the land?
Correct.
Even though the land has a 75-year lease, but it's still owned by the federal government?
That's how they did it on the VASH, so that's how we anticipate or do it on this project as well.
Thanks for refreshing our memories.
Yep.
Other questions from the council?
Maybe you should stop.
I just want to clarify, because that was my question, too. This is, we'd already approved TIF in 2015, but it was confusing. So, the buildings are going to be paying property taxes, but the land will not.
Right.
That's the differentiation.
Right. If you open up the assessor's website and look at the different valuations that are out there, they assign a value to the land and a value to the buildings. This would just be on the buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That was helpful.
I forgot. I have a picture.
Ooh, pictures.
I'll show you.
I saved you a thousand words.
This is... Okay. This is just a rendering of it, so it may not look exactly like this, but this gives you a feel. This is actually facing Victory Drive, so it's facing, the front of it is facing south. So, on 70th Street is where you'll see the side of the building. This site plan shows. So, this is 70th Street right here, and this is the clinic right here. So, it's facing Victory Drive. And then here's another example of it.
While you have that there, would you show the changes to L Street, please?
Sure. It's right here. There'll be a turn, a right turn, a right turn lane here, and then the traffic signals will be upgraded. So, really, the only change is construction of a turn lane. There's another turn lane to be constructed as well on the north entrance up here.
Thank you. Mr. Landis, you said there were some other people who'd be speaking as a part of this presentation or coming up later?
We do have the...
You had some more, part of your initial presentation. Was there anybody else?
Captain.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for this testifier?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce George Achola with Burlington Capital, who is one of the developers.
Thank you.
Moving a little slow in my old age. George Achola, A-C-H-O-L-A, 1004 Foreman Street, Omaha, Nebraska, representing Burlington Capital. I've been before most of you here. Councilman Show, but believe this is the first time I've had the pleasure of addressing you. This project, as you know, has been an ongoing, long-term project, and it's one of those, I would call it, true public-private partnership. And the partnership, of course, begins with the city of Lincoln, includes our partners, the VA, Seniors Foundation, and D. Aguilar from the Seniors Foundation is here, so we've kept her up to date on kind of what's going on, because they've, we're basically stepping in their shoes when we leased this ground. And, you know, when we came before you, we heard the veterans very loudly and very clearly that they wanted the clinic on this campus. And we at Burlington Capital, we assessed our capability to deliver that, and we had to be honest with ourselves that we had never done a project of this style and this magnitude for the federal government, and this is not the project that we wanted to learn on. So, we went outside and figured, you know, we probably better get somebody here who knows what they're doing so we can deliver for those veterans. And as a result of that, we did our homework. We did a little bit of research. And Johnson Development, a group out of Birmingham, Alabama, kind of rose to the forefront as a group that has kind of been doing very well in this arena, because this is especially across the country. The RFPs are very complex, and they give you a very short timeline. And so, we thought that it was probably would be everybody's best interest, putting us at our own financial interest, of course, that we partnered with somebody who knew what they were doing. And as a result of that, Johnson Development, we partnered with them, and our partnership bore fruit as the VA ultimately made the right decision, in our opinions, and decided to place the campus on that clinic. And as Wynne has indicated, the placement of the campus on that clinic essentially triggers the rest of the redevelopment, and we are working on that as we speak. So, this is a major step toward making that happen, and I would ask for your continued support, as you have given it to us in the past for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is D. Aguilar, A-G-U-I-L-A-R. My address is 7150 Holmes Park Road, Lincoln. And I am the current president of the Seniors Foundation Board, and we are very excited to see this project going forward. It's been a long time in coming, and as the extended leaseholder, we are just really excited to be working with Burlington and all of the other developers, because this is something that's very near and dear to Lincoln, and very near and dear, as we've heard, to our veterans and such. And so, going forward, I just think this is the first step in a wonderful redevelopment plan of this property, and very exciting for Lincoln in the coming years.
Thank you. Questions for either one of these testifiers?
Councilman Show, if you've given me the pleasure of introducing representative of Johnson Development. I think it's important that you know who we're doing business with, because you guys are a partner with us in this project. So, Derek Weaver has come all the way from Birmingham, and I'm going to introduce Derek Weaver of Johnson Development, one of our partners in this project.
Hi, I'm Derek Weaver from Birmingham, Alabama, representative of Johnson Development. Want to appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As it was described, it has been a long process. We're glad to be the result of that process and representative of the Seniors Foundation, those on the staff with the city that we've worked with for months now, our friends at Burlington Capital, who have become our partners in this endeavor, and all of you at the city. As it was pointed out, it's been a long time in the making. I was lamenting with George just prior to coming into the meeting, some of my own experiences with who is my primary customer, the Department of Veteran Affairs, and some of the challenges involved in that, but reflecting on the pleasure it is when we get to the end of this process, and we have a ribbon cutting, and the ceremonies that take place, and the veterans that come out, and the appreciation they show to all those of us involved in these new clinics that are for their benefit, that help us pay that little bit that we're capable of paying in that debt for them and their service for our nation. This clinic in Lincoln will be the sixth opportunity that Johnson has had to provide this service, and to attend this ribbon cutting, and sharing that joy with the veterans. And we're very pleased to be part of that, and we're pleased to be an extension of you in this community, and that service to our veterans. And if there's anything that I can do for you, any questions that you have, I would love the opportunity to address them now or going forward into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Questions from the council? Thank you. We appreciate your dedication to this project. Councilman Camp?
You said this is your sixth project?
Yes.
Where are your other locations, out of curiosity? Your other five locations?
We started in Fort Wayne, Indiana. We went, built one in our home state of Huntsville, Alabama, followed by Savannah, Georgia, Lafayette, Louisiana. We're currently building in El Paso, Texas, and been pleased to be here in Lincoln for number six.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. Are there, are there others in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item?
Hello, my name is Robert Way, 801 Elavado Avenue, Lincoln, Nebraska. I wanted to say, as a veteran in the community who uses that facility, that this process, as it's been described, has been complex. And while there are a lot of veterans who are happy, there's some who aren't happy, but that's pretty much what you expect, because it's been a bunch of compromises, there's a bunch of choices. So, I think that it shows, I'm pleased with the way it's come, and I definitely thought it was a good opportunity to talk about Victory Apartments, how it has taken veterans off the street. I've seen it. I know that that first phase worked really well, so I thought I would come and voice my support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wayes. Questions for this testifier? Would anyone else in the chamber like to speak on these agenda items? Mr. Help? Yeah, there's another microphone here on this side. You're welcome to use that one.
Again, it's speak a lot tonight. I will go on record, I'm against more VA centers. One of the reasons, along with our media, the perverted movies everybody hates the U.S., is we are the world's policemen. Every modern war is fought over oil and control of central banks. Even World War II, I have a friend acquaintance, he's doing serious research. He said World War II, Hitler was not a threat to the mainland U.S. The U.S. government killed half as many total as Hitler, 10 million Native Americans, and this friend is native. It killed 10 million. Hitler killed 6 million Jews. The U.S. government did the same thing. Wars are fought over oil, money, and religion. One reason, I would not have done the military. One, they wouldn't have taken my disability at 18. Another reason is all the vaccines. And yes, vaccines are bad. I have autism. When I was a kid, 1 in 5,000 people had it. Now, it's 436. And that Andrew Wakefield that was discredited, he was discredited because he was a threat to the drug companies. All these chronic diseases that supposedly vaccines prevent, well, really, the rates of the diseases dropped off drastically before the vaccines came out, due to things like cleaner water, sanitation, living conditions. The only one, I've been to vaccine talks about this. The only one you do not know for sure is smallpox, because it predates medical records. I do not, the military in this country is a huge inflated budget, yet there's people that need help, like medical, housing, et cetera. People low income, like myself and other people, people that don't have enough food to eat, that need more housing, need more housing vouchers, and stuff like that. Instead, we're giving all these veterans so many benefits when they made the choice to go in the military and fight all these wars, people killing people, and then they have oil and religion. And what about, some countries don't even have a military in Europe, and they do all right? So, I'm against more funds for veterans. When there's people like me, they're low income, need help, and the only way to get money out of my family is to sue them. So, no, I'm against more funding for veterans. Why would we do that? There's a lot of other people that need help, Medicare, Medicaid, Social Security, housing, food stamps, all this stuff. Instead, we're just giving it to veterans. They made their bed, let them lie in it. They made that choice to fight a war and be violent, and all that stuff. They made that choice. They made their bed, let them sleep in it. They made a choice to be violent. And then you factor PTSD. They come back, lose a limb, PTSD, and then that inflates healthcare costs. I'm against more funding for veterans. How much time I got?
Minute twenty-five.
Trying to think what else I want to say about that.
Mr. Helwig, I think you should thank the veterans, because you now have a bed to sleep in.
I'm not going to, but I think I'm, I'll end at that.
Thank you. Are there others in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to move to our next item.
That would be items 6E through J. They are repealing ordinance 20478, approved April 10th, 2017, authorizing a general business occupation tax for an enhanced employment area for the area generally described as the southeast corner of 9th and O Street. Repealing ordinance 20479, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds in the amount of not to exceed $11,663,514 for the 9th and O redevelopment project. And repealing ordinance 20480, authorizing the issuance of occupation tax revenue bonds in the amount of $2,350,000 in connection with the 9th and O redevelopment project. Then we are approving the 9th and O redevelopment project between HLI Development and the city, amending the fiscal year 1819 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,46,907 in TIF funds, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds in the amount of $3,46,907. Approving the Canopy Park Project Redevelopment Agreement, amending the fiscal year 1819 CIP to authorize and appropriate $6,435,649,000 in TIF funds. Authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds, ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $49,880,000 aggregate stated principal amount of general obligation parking system and refunding bonds. Purchase agreement between the West Hay Market JPA and the city for the acquisition of property generally described as the west half of 660 N Street in the amount of $900,000. Real property exchange agreement between Cotswold Management, the West Hay Market JPA.
I think you've gone a little too far.
You're mixing, oh, two, two projects. I'm sorry, 6K through N then.
You said J earlier. We're going all the way to N, correct?
It's 6E through 6J.
Let's just stop at J.
Oh, I'm so sorry I did.
I'm so glad when somebody else does something.
You didn't get that far. We were all going, "Wait, what?" All right. So, now we're going 6E through J, and Mr. Landis.
Thank you. Urban Development Department Director David Landis, applicant in this case. This is the second of three major projects that you'll be looking at tonight, and it represents a six-floor, six-story hotel at 9th and O. I said before that this has been a 12-year journey for the administration, but there is a part of that story that I'd like to recognize tonight, because we haven't done it generally, and that is the role of the city council. It is through your oversight. It is through your guidance, and it is ultimately because of your approval that we've been able to do what we've done in those 12 years. And I want to recognize the seven of you with that same record of being a city builder, as we hope that we are in the Urban Development Department. And I would like to call back those council people who've been part of this unprecedented period in Lincoln's career, and they include Ken Swoboda, and John Spotts, and Jane Snyder, Diana Schimmick, Dan Marvin, Adam Horning, Trent Fellers, Robin Eschleman, Del Gemmery, Jean Carroll, and Jonathan Cook. This project is one that Dallas has worked on. Dallas is the assistant director for the department. He's been responsible for a great deal of work in Lincoln, the Embassy Suites, the Grand Mans, the Marcus Grand Theater, the Lincoln Station, and the Cornusco Marriott Hotel among them. I've asked him to describe the project for you. What I can tell you is this. It has met the planning department's conformance. It's met the planning commission's conformance with the long-term comprehensive plan in multiple ways. It's been approved by the Urban Design Committee, and it has our support in building a corner that, right now, could use some love. Six stories of love, to be exact.
Thank you, Dave. I'm Dallas McGee with the Urban Development Department. We do have a total of six ordinances related to this particular project before you tonight. The first three are repealing ordinances that we brought to you two years ago, in April of 2017, for a development on this very site. The next three are the ones we're going to talk about in a little more detail tonight, and those are proposing a new development, a six-story hotel on the site. Just a week ago, we brought you the plan amendment to the Lincoln Center redevelopment plan to establish a project area for this project. The area in yellow is the actual project site itself. We've included all of the rights of way around the block, so that if we need to make improvements in the right of way, we can do that as well. That's a typical procedure that we use. This plan has been to the Planning Commission and was approved unanimously with respect to consistency with the city's comprehensive plan. It's been to the Urban Design Committee, who reviewed it and made a number of recommendations, design-related recommendations. Those recommendations were taken to the architect and the developer, and those recommendations were accommodated by the developer. And what we have tonight is, is a rendering here of that six-story development. The focus is on the corner of O and 9th. That is the actual, will be the entryway to a retail space. The hotel will enter off of O Street. The building will go all the way to the terminal building and almost touch the building. And it will accommodate 140 rooms. And one thing that I think is very important about this project, it includes 88 parking stalls that the developer will be providing. Those stalls, many of those will be on the lower level, and some of them will be on, at grade level. So, there's a number of very attractive components to this project. The total investment on the part of the developers, about $28 million. That will generate just over $3 million in TIF that will be used to assist in making the project a reality. That $3 million will be used primarily to assist in the acquisition of the land. While the developers, some of the developers are consistent with the developers that we brought to you two years ago, the development team is different. And other uses for the TIF will include the administrative free, the bond council, and legal fees. There are representatives of the developers here tonight, and I'm sure they would be interested in speaking to you, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have of me.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Questions for Mr. McGee? Councilwoman Raybold, then Councilwoman Lamb.
Dallas, can you discuss about the streetscape improvements at that intersection? Are there going to be any signalization improvements, or the sidewalk, or?
We don't, yeah, we don't anticipate any signalization improvements. However, there will be a drop-off that will be accommodated on O Street, and some of the parking stalls on 9th Street will be converted to a bus drop-off, where buses can pull in. The actual design of the streetscape hasn't been completed at this point, but we have language in the redevelopment agreement that says, when that is completed, that will be brought to the mayor for approval, and it just, it hasn't been completed at this point.
And is there an alley on the south side of this project?
Yes.
Or is that going to be an access or entrance, a service one, or?
There is an alley on the, on the south side of the project, the east-west alley that goes from 9th to 10th. There can be access off of the alley into the garage, as well as access off of O Street that will get you into the garage and down to the lower level.
And so, what, what type of improvements are planned for that specific alley?
I cannot tell you exactly what is planned for the alley, but it will be improved. The east-west alley will be improved. There is a north-south alley in the block as well that goes south to N Street. That one will not be addressed.
Do this. Councilwoman Lamb, then Councilman Camp.
Thank you. In 6E, we're repealing the ordinance that authorized a business occupation tax on the previous project, and we're not reauthorizing any business occupation taxes. I just want that to be clear.
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Camp?
Yes, Mr. McGee, I wanted to follow up with my colleague, Ms. Raybold. On the O Street, unfortunately, the brickwork and everything's got deteriorated. Isn't it contemplated there'd be enough TIF in this?
Yes, there is TIF that's been allocated for the streetscape, and, and once we see the final plans, we will, we will approve that. But as I said, the plans haven't been completed at this point. But there, there is TIF that's allocated to make improvements in both the O Street and 9th Street streetscapes.
Well, I'm talking about the street itself.
Oh, the street, I'm sorry. No, there is not, we have not allocated funds to redo the street itself.
Other questions for this testifier?
Do you, do you have a spreadsheet that lists out the improvements and the dollars? That might be helpful.
The total TIF you see at the bottom is just over 3... The total TIF you see at the bottom is just over 3.1 million. Most of that will be used for acquisition, and for bond council fees, administrative fee, and legal fees. Other improvements that typically, sometimes are funded with TIF, will be carried out, but will be paid for by the developer. Any facade enhancements and energy enhancements, those will be carried out and paid for by the developer.
Councilman Camp?
On your site acquisition there of this, I can't quite read, is that a 3 million?
3,80,000.
So, is that to excavate and improve it? Who owns the land now?
The land was purchased by the previous developer. The current developer is, is, I believe it's HLI Development, it's a different configuration than the earlier developer.
Other questions? Thank you, Councilwoman Gillerbear.
I assume the repeal for the TIF allocation bonds, those bonds were never issued, correct?
Those bonds what?
Were never issued.
That's correct, they were never issued. And repeal just officially puts it into them.
Those are items 6E through 6?
Yes, presumably site acquisition was part of the TIF allocation previously, maybe at a greater level, is that correct?
It would have been, it would have been part of it as well.
Okay, and maybe when the private developer comes up, they can show us the, the public improvements that are being paid for by the, yeah, okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. McGee, thank you very much. Are there others that would like to speak on this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Mark Hunsaker, appearing on behalf of HLI Development, the developer of this project.
Welcome.
With me are Clay Smith and John Klimpel, who are principals in HLI Development. As, as Dallas said, and did a great job of summarizing the project, this is basically the same redevelopment area. It includes the same traffic pattern, which was a significant time-consuming effort the last time around. It does include its own parking, which for a hotel project in downtown Lincoln is unique. There's only one other that I know of that has, one other hotel that has provided its own parking, and that would be the former Hilton, now Graduate Hotel, and that was sometime in the early 70s. There is no EEA tax associated with this project. It is somewhat shorter because there are no condos on top of it, but we think it's still a very appealing design, and will have a very nice impact on that entryway to the city. The facade extends over to cover the west facade of the terminal building, which I think we'd all agree is a, not a particularly attractive facade at this point. And, and, you know, I, you've got a lot on your agenda tonight, and I'm really not going to try to extend this any further. If you have questions of us, we're here to answer them. I think I would have, there is one question that was asked about public improvements in rights-of-way and so forth. The, the TIF is being allocated to site, site acquisition, because there's, there's been a change in the statute in the last year or two that allows for acquisition to be done prior to the execute, actual execution of the redevelopment agreement. And so rather than try to administer the, the allocation of TIF to a lot of smaller things, the choice was made to allocate the TIF to the site acquisition and leave to the developer's cost solely, those things such as the public street improvements that are necessary to have the drop-off area and access off of O Street, the conversion of parking to a bus parking area on Ninth Street, paving of the alley, the utility work in the alley, and those, and the streetscape improvements. So all those things are going to come at the developer's cost and not be reimbursed by TIF specifically because the TIF is being allocated to site, site acquisition. It makes for a much easier administration of an, of an agreement like this, so that the staff doesn't have to sit down and go through line by line and invoice by invoice to verify every penny that was spent on a specific streetscape project or the like. It, it makes for a much smoother and easier administration. So, if there are other questions about that, I'll try to answer them.
Councilman Camp?
Thank you, Mr. Hunsaker. So, there's, I know Mr. Klimpel was involved in the prior project, are there some common ownerships in this, or is it just a matter of they can go back and reimburse for what they paid for the land?
Yes, there is definitely some common ownership. NelNet is not involved in this particular project, so there's, there's that major change.
So is it, are they the only ones that aren't involved? So some of this money would go back to reimbursed current owners?
Well, this, again, the statute was changed so that the allocation of TIF can be made to acquisition that is accomplished prior to actual execution of the redevelopment agreement. Previously, we had some, some issues where, and I know you're aware of them, where, where a developer had owned a site and then needed to transfer it to a new entity as part of the redevelopment process in order to qualify the, the acquisition for TIF. And so, when the statute was revised the last year, that change was made, recognizing that at some point, everybody has to own, has to buy the site, and if it's part of a redevelopment project that is worthy of, of going forward and meets all the other tests, the acquisition of a site, and some other incidental expenses that are inevitably incurred in this process, if they're incurred even before the execution of the agreement, they're reimbursable and eligible for, for TIF. And that's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a much smoother administrative process to do it that way.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Mr. Hunsaker, can you please address some of the, the alley improvements? It sounds like you're going to be paving the alley that runs east to west, but the other alley that runs north to south, is that what separates between the terminal building and your, the new structure, or?
The alley that runs north and south runs through the south half of the block, and it is not part of this project, and we will not be making improvements to that alley. The alley that runs east and west along the south side of this project will be paved. And it's, if you've been through it, you know, it needs it very badly. It's, it's in very poor condition. It'll take a fair amount of grading as well as, and there is a considerable amount of utility work that needs to be done back there as well.
Okay, so the, the alley that will not be touched, will it still be utilized in some capacity for service vehicles or anything like that?
We don't anticipate it being used for this project. It's, it's used by the, by the businesses that front Ninth Street in the south half of the block. And I, I'm not sure, but it may also be used to access the parking lot on the southeast quadrant of the block.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Councilwoman Gillerbear?
I found in the document under Section 303 what the redeveloped public improvements are. I just was curious about the cost estimate for them, if you have that normally that's included, and?
That is not something I have at the tip of my tongue, and I don't know that we have broken it down.
I'm sorry, we don't have that with us today, that we can provide that to you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Do you have other questions?
Do you mind discussing the design enhancements that you did in response to the Urban Design Committee, just to help us understand what they were?
Well, I know the back part of the building.
Please come forward.
John Klimpel, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Lincoln Hotel Group.
Thank you.
I'm the hotel guy here in town. This'll be fine.
Step to the microphone and help.
Okay, so to answer your question, there was a couple items. In the back of the hotel, we had a darker metal, and really, Craig is the expert. You want to come up, Craig? Because he actually did it, if you don't mind.
I understand that would be helpful.
He worked closely with the mayor to get this handled. You tell him, boss.
Craig Smith, I'm with Speedway Properties. What was asked by the mayor and the design committee was, there were some concerns about how the awnings from the front entryway wrapped around the corner of the building, and so we addressed that with the change, and, and you've seen that in the latest design. Other items, they were concerned about how the very top of the building with the glass corner was handled, and we listened to their suggestions and addressed that. There was some, some material that we used on the backside of the building, and they were concerned about that, and how we covered the, a portion of the terminal building that is where the, where you drive through and then access the basement parking structure, and we addressed all of those issues. There were some internal designs that we did, where we increased the seating and the activity on O Street, where we increased all of the window sizes, and then, and created an area where the public, it activates all of the streetscape there with all of the folks that can drive by and see the activity in the whole front lobby and the eating area and, and that sort of thing for the hotel. So, they were all positive. We addressed them, got it back to them immediately, and we got the mayor's approval on all of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Councilwoman?
Retail, you mentioned that the corner was actually an entrance for a retail space. Do you have any thing you can tell us about what that might entail?
We're, we're still exploring it, to be honest with you.
Ideally, what, you know?
Well, it won't be a barber, I know that.
This is Clay Smith, I'm with Speedway Properties. We envision the corner would be best used for a retail that would likely be a restaurant and/or a bar together, mostly a restaurant, just to serve the patrons that would be visiting the hotel.
Okay, thank you.
A young woman walked up behind you, I think.
I just got a?
Mr. Hunsaker, would you like to?
The, the cost estimate for the redeveloped public improvements are 1.1 million.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? Gentlemen, anything else? Thank you very much for coming forward. Are there? I'll do it, sir, are there others in the chamber that'd like to speak?
Yes. Hello, members of the council, my name is Todd Ogden, I'm with the Downtown Lincoln Association, 206 South 13th Street, Suite 101. Our board on April 23 unanimously approved this project as we were given a presentation of this development. Our 2018 master plan that we recently adopted really has a major category in a catalyst project focusing on the enhancement of our entryway on O Street. And this being on the corner of Ninth and O, we have about 30,000 cars daily that go, come off 180 and come through here. So we're really excited to have something active on this corner to give a nice perspective when people come into the city, or when they're commuting or not, to, to see what's going on here in this corner. We like the active first-floor environment, whatever that activity may be. That's something that we're encouraged with the design and allow for that type of activity. And the streetscape also, with the plan of O Street, we're very comfortable that the developers and Mr. Klimpel will work with our crew to make sure the maintenance can be not only enhanced, but something that our crew will be able to maintain in the public right-of-way. So we're extremely excited about this kind of activity.
Thank you, Mr. Ogden. Questions? Thank you very much for your testimony. Would others in the audience like to speak on this agenda? Mr. Waze?
Hello, my name's Robert Ware, I've already given my address. Addressing this particular issue, first of all, the project itself looks like a beautiful project, it looks like it would be a great thing to see when you first come in on West O, it looks like a beautiful building, it looks like it's got a, a team of highly skilled, highly experienced people behind it, and it'll be a great success. And I'm glad it'll be a great success, and I think it'll keep downtown going strong. My question is, well, it's not a question, because I know this isn't the point of the time for questions, is, I thought I just heard that the public improvements will cost 1.3 million dollars, but they're asking for 3 million dollars in TIF, but maybe I heard wrong. More importantly, is if you go down the street to 2926 P Street, you will run into the Journal Star Building, which between 2000, this is according to the county assessor's records, between 2015, that building was, that land was valued at 1.3 million, and now in 2019, it's valued at 2.3 million, which is a good raise in the value of your land over six years. And that's because many years ago, we had a great idea. We were going to improve downtown. We're going to put money into downtown so we could make it better, so we could make it a showcase. But we've put money into downtown for 10 years, public money into downtown. We've seen the values rise. We took an area which was blighted and we fixed it. I'm glad we spent that money. We are now spending money so these developers, actually if I understood the presentation, can make land acquisition on land that has inflated in value because we spent the initial money. The other thing I heard, and this wasn't decided by this council, I don't think it was decided at the state level, that they made it easier for the TIF people to get their money and to come, and they didn't have, they didn't have to detail every, where every penny goes, where they're going to spend on TIF. Unpopular opinion time, I don't think that's good. Government's supposed to be complex and have lots of different levels. It's not supposed to work efficiently. It's supposed to have conflicts in it at all level. The mayor can't do whatever he wants, the city council can't do whatever he wants. There's always supposed to be conflicts, because you, that way you check. When you have a growing, healthy economy like we now have in downtown, you don't need the government involved. So they can get out of the way, and people can make money when we're not in a blighted area. My primary statement is this area of town is no longer blighted. TIF is to help improve blighted areas. We need to stop spending TIF money on this part of town. And because I learned something about, at this meeting, there's several other projects on this area of town, I'd ask my comments be copied there, so I don't waste any more of this council's time.
Thank you, Mr. Waze. Questions?
I'd just like to address the first part, because you, look, I think you wanted a clarification. The incremental value that the development creates doesn't always, isn't sufficient for the total number of public improvements, so if X equals TIF and Y equals what the redeveloped contributes, then Z equals the total improvements. So, put the X and Y together, you get to the, the total that they're going to do. So, 3 million is X, 1.1 million is Y, gets you to 4.1 million total in public improvements. That's how that works.
Okay, and like I said, it's a complex formula, I've been trying to understand it for years now, and I really haven't been able to wrap my head around it, but I think the overall argument that this area of town is no longer blighted might have some value.
Thank you. Are there others in the chamber that would like to speak on these six agenda items? 6E through what?
E through J.
E through J. The ones we've been?
The Ninth and O redevelopment project.
Mr. Landis, could you come back for a second? I have a question for you, since no one else. You listed some council people that deserve some credit for working on this, and I was trying to keep up, but I wasn't going very well. Could you, do you have that list in front of you? Can you do that again?
I wrote it down. There are the seven of you, the seven elders, the wise men, and 11 more. But the ones that come to mind are Ken Swoboda, John Spotts, Robin Eschleman, Dan Marvin, Diana Schimmick, Adam Horning, now, I'm going to?
Jane Snyder.
Jane Snyder, thank you very much.
I have Doug Emery.
Doug Emery.
John Cook.
That's right.
Jean Carroll.
Jean Carroll, and I think there's one more.
Lloyd Hinckley.
Okay, and Lloyd Hinckley, thank you for the emendation.
I, you were going fast, I couldn't write them all down. Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
Could you address, because this is something that comes up repeatedly in conversations about blight, why the downtown is still considered blighted despite investments and improvements? Can you touch on the reasons why it is still addressed with TIF?
If you were to send out a photographer? If you were to send out a photographer who walked the alleys in the back of house operations, if you took a look through the Public Works Department at the age of what this, uh, area is, if you counted the number of lots on a block that has to be acquired, for example, in this case, it wasn't one purchase that allows this hotel, but as I recall, four purchases. That works great when you're one of the first one or two purchases, but when you're the third and fourth and you see it coming, the price goes through the roof. All of those are elements that go into the designation of what is blighted and substandard. The age of, uh, of the infrastructure, its quality, um, the presence of dilapidation, but also such things as the layout of lots and how hard it is to acquire. It is, um, site acquisition is a TIF-able expense because the theory is you're buying land in a dilapidated or deteriorated, blighted and substandard area. Now, it may not be itself the most appalling location, but it is in that area that you are trying to infuse growth and development. If you remember back to that corner, one-story buildings, maybe two, the Sidetrack Lounge, legendary, but if you compare the Sidetrack Lounge to this hotel, I think you'd say that the density and improvement is, is a substantial alteration and to the benefit of the city. Um, so, when we, for example, demolition. Demolition's a very necessary expense of getting rid of something so you can build something bigger and better. It is a TIF-able expense. It isn't a streetscape, it isn't a paved alley or the burying of lines as will be done in the alley, but it is a necessary part of the redevelopment process and therefore is a TIF-able expense. If I could add just one comment about what was said before, there is no relaxation in the necessity of accounting for every penny of TIF expenditures. The reason it's simpler is because when you sa- take the site acquisition, there is a contract that shows its cost. When you account for every building material and facade and the people who installed it, um, you have not one cost, but dozens and dozens of costs. In both cases, we will check every penny. But in, but in this case, you get to check a high-ticket item that simplifies how many times you're going to have to check the math, but the arduousness of the examination remains unchanged, it's that we can do one big-ticket item instead of 1,200 small items. And that will reduce our costs. That's, so, that may not have been clear to you before, but I want to make sure that you don't think that state law has relieved us of the obligation to account for this money.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. Other questions? Others like to speak on this agenda items? Let us move to our next set of agenda items.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hunsinger, would?
Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna prolong this a lot, but I wanna just comment on the, on the fact that it, it is true that a lot of public and private investment has been made in the downtown area and, and it has improved markedly over the past many years, um, whether, whether through the ifs of, of publicly funded bonds, or whether they were TIF or other kinds of private improvements. But you, the thing to keep in mind is that the, the term blight is a statutory term that is well-defined in statute, and, and Mr. Landis just went through a number of the factors that are involved in that. The, the, the downtown area that we're working in here is still within an area that this council determined to be blighted and substandard, and that means in the, in the statutory sense. It doesn't mean that it's a slum, it isn't something that you can just necessarily drive through and look at and say, "This is blighted," but it's, it's, it meets the statutory criteria, and until such time as you determine otherwise, it is eligible for the use of TIF, and, and I think this is a proper use of TIF, and, and in this particular case, the site, um, that this project will clearly eliminate a blighted and substandard condition that exists on that corner of Ninth and O.
I just have one minute. I just wanna thank the council for all your work, we've been at this, I've been at it four years, so I appreciate all your time. I promise you, we have the loan, the equity's online, we will start this project June or July at the latest. So we are ready to go. I also wanna thank Dave Landis and his whole team, what a great job, thank you, and then all our partners, the end of those hours we've spent to make sure this happened. Thank you.
Thank you. I think now we're ready to move to the next set of agenda items.
Okay. Now we'll call items 6K through S. They are all regarding the Canopy Park Project redevelopment. We have the agreement between the West Hay Market JPA, Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation, Canopy Park condo association and the city, amending the fiscal year 1819 CIP to authorize and appropriate $6,435,649 in TIF funds, authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the, in the amount of $6,435,649. Ordinance authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed $49,880,000 aggregate stated principal amount of general obligation, parking system re, and refunding bonds. Purchase agreement with West Hay Market JPA and the city for the acquisition of property generally described as the west half of 660 N Street in the amount of $900,000. Real property exchange agreement between Cotswold Management, the West Hay Market JPA and the city for property generally located west of Seventh Street and south of N Street. Approval of a real estate purchase agreement between the Lincoln Parks and Rec Foundation and the city for portions of property generally described as Outlot C and Lot 1, Block 11, West Hay Market Edition. Approving the dedication of park land generally described as parts of Outlot C and Lot 1, Block 11, West Hay Market Edition, located south of N Street and west of Seventh Street, and amending the fiscal year 1819 CIP to authorize and appropriate $1,100,000 in advanced acquisition funds and $6 million in other financing for the South Hay Market project.
That was a mouthful. Now, we did read, Madam Clark read a lot of agenda items, it's basically Block 4 and Block 5 of the South Hay Market Development. We will have presentation, and then the chamber will be allowed to give public testimony. Five minutes per testifier to cover all the items. We'll go through this one time, it'll take us a while, but we'll be thorough and efficient. Ready, okay.
Urban Development Department Director Dave Landis, applicant in this case. We see Block 4 and Block 5 as one project. We see it as a unified symbiotic whole. We see it as, interestingly enough, the end of one catalyst project, and that catalyst project was named in 2005, and it was the arena. And this, but this is the end of not Block 1, not Block 2, not Block 3, the ones to the north of Harris over FZ, but Block 4 and Block 5. So it completes a catalyst project, and a catalyst project is an important phrase. It means a project that has implications beyond itself. It engenders growth around it, it motivates others to join in or to, uh, add to the development. It prompts further actions, which is exactly what the arena has done. That agenda as a catalyst project, I think we all have seen over time and enjoyed. This is a second catalyst project, and it is the Signature Park in Block 5. The DLA folks, Todd Ogden, had the brilliant idea of putting the downtown master plan in written form, and here are the list of catalyst projects, and here's one of them. It is to create a signature urban park at this location. Block 4, economic development, Block 5, economic development, Block 4, affordable housing, and parts of a larger economic development picture. This concept that you're seeing today has private development on Block 4, residential and affordable housing, commercial space, but it also has redevelop, or mother, development on Block 5, the potential for as much as 225,000 square feet. It also has a permanent home for the JA Woolham Company and its future growth, and more importantly, it is the catalyst for what happens to the south of the park. What are now brick buildings, just like the brick buildings that were there when the Hay Market was created and developed and grew. This project today is the end of one catalyst and the beginning of another, and the one who's been working the hardest on this in my department is Hallie Salem, who gave you the Assurity Project, the West Hay Market Phase 1 and 2, Case, Case &amp; Case, Swor's Paper, and the Raymond Brothers Project among many, and she will explain the nuts and bolts of Block 4 and Block 5.
Well, I'd like to take all the credit for those projects, but I think I had a little help. I'm Hallie Salem, I'm with the Urban Development Department. We have nine items, we have four big topics, um, we'll have about 10 speakers behind me. So we appreciate your patience, we wanna give each one of these items as much import as they deserve. So, um, we're gonna get into a little bit of the details, um, for each project, um, so that, um, the public hasn't heard all of this and, and the public can comment on it. So those nine items are condensed down into what Dave talked about with Block 4, um, the parking garage and bond issue, the exchange of property on Block 5 with the park and Woolham, as well as the creation of an area and dedication of funding for the new park in South Hay Market. Dave touched on one of these key, um, items, economic opportunity. So this project, uh, really advances, um, a, uh, input of resources, $40 million in private funding, which when you total with all of the other private investment dedicated and completed in the West Hay Market area, we're at about $200 million right now. And, um, and that doesn't include all of the, uh, Hay Market, uh, private investment of over $80 million as a result of the arena, or that can be attributed to the arena. So in addition, um, to that, we're, we're looking at then adding the parking garage and other public improvements to this area. This project also supports affordable housing, and the, and the time is right for affordable housing. The 2018 downtown master plan that Dave referred to, uh, highlighted the need for affordable housing in downtown and offering different housing choices. With the addition of 41 affordable units, um, to the Block 4 project, the make, the Hay Market will have approximately 75, um, housing projects, housing, excuse me, dedicated affordable housing units, uh, to persons earning 60% or less of the area median income. This helps provide some relief, um, to the neighborhoods to the south, as well as provides additional choices. And then, the time is right for a downtown neighborhood. And it's amazing to think back of how many housing units have been added over the last 10 years. So before 2009, we had about 100 units in the Hay Market area. Since then, we've added 270 housing units, plus another 1,200, uh, student housing beds in the Hay Market. And then with this project, we'll have another 235 housing units. And, and then south of, uh, Hay Market in, uh, in the South Salt Creek neighborhood, um, between Hay Market and A Street, we have about 900 housing units. So in total, we're talking about 4,000 residents immediately impacted by this project, um, by a park and by, um, neighborhood services in the area. So it's fitting that we're bringing this to you today, um, and the timing is right for it. All of the pre-planning that we have done is part of, um, the, uh, the West Hay Market planning process, the downtown master plan, planning process. And we've moved from the arena, uh, moving south through Canopy Lofts, Hyatt and Hobson Place, Huddle, Olson, um, Olson 2 now underway, um, Canopy Row, Shores, and now with Block 4 and, and further south. So we're... I'm gonna skip over some things, 'cause in the interest of time. So, moving then further south to Block 5, um, we're looking at then, um, creating a Block 5 parcel, as well as, um, squaring up a property of, uh, of an older business in South Hay Market, the JA Woolham Company. So I'm gonna talk a little bit more about Block 4 itself. This is a, uh, mixed-use, um, housing project, and the total investment, um, in this, uh, in Block 4 will be about 47.5 million, about 40 million of that is private. The, um, yellowish, off-whiteish, uh, portion to the north is the LHDC, a Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation portion of this project, and is, um, 13.7 million dollars of investment. LHDC proposes, proposes to invest $11 million in this project, um, with 2.1 million dollars of tax increment financing and an affordable housing grant of 522,000. The TIF, uh, and the affordable housing subsidy will the, will allow these, um, 41 affordable housing units, uh, to remain affordable to those earning 60% or less of the area median income. And then Canopy Park proposes to invest, uh, a total of 32.8 million in the project, two, 28.5 of which is private, and then another 4.3 million dollars is TIF. A portion of the private improvements, um, a million dollars will be an aid to construction for the parking garage, will, which Brandon and Wayne will go into a little bit further. And then a portion of the, of the TIF for the, uh, for the project will go toward, um, the Park Plaza, uh, $762,000 approximately. This project will, uh, construct 153, um, multifamily units and, uh, approximately 11,000, uh, square feet of commercial. The total project is expected to be valued at over 39 million dollars, and upon completion of the project, that will increase the value of the land, uh, by 38 million dollars, uh, from a base value of 1,4 million dollars. This then is expected to generate 6.4 million dollars in TIF. So the, the project will be divided into, uh, notes A and B, and that, um, includes an A for the Park Plaza improvements, and then the note B in the amount of 5.6, 5.7 million dollars for the remainder of those, uh, TIF items. So, uh, TIF will go toward the Park Plaza construction, um, the, the streetscape, demolition, land purchase, facade, energy enhancements, a lot of the same things that we've seen on other West Hay Market projects. And then the JPA will assist this project by providing $475,000 toward the streetscape, and then again with the 522,000 dollars, uh, affordable housing grant. The adjoining garage, um, will be about 700 stalls, uh, Wayne will talk about that in more detail. The residential users will have rights to lease up to 207, uh, reserved parking stalls, and then 25 parking stalls, uh, for commercial tenants. Before I turn it over to Wayne and Brandon, I also need to talk about the exchange agreement on Block 5. That exchange agreement is between Cotswold... That exchange agreement is between Cotswold Management LLC and the West Haymarket JPA, as well as the city. This exchange proposals to provide the JPA two parcels, and in return, the Cotswold building will receive one parcel. So that first exchange will allow the Block Five redevelopment parcel to kind of square up. It will allow for an up to 67,000-square-foot parcel, and it will accommodate potentially loading and parking, as well as a 40,000 to 55,000-square-foot building footprint on that site. The potential redevelopment on that site could be up to 225,000 or even more square feet. And then the JPA will likely sell this land as part of a future redevelopment project. And then the land exchange will also provide the opportunity to grow an existing South Haymarket business, the J.A. Woolham Company, who will see the benefit of a more efficient site, allow for potential expansion to the west, and then allow for the creation of a public park driveway and public parking area. So I'm just showing that exchange of land, the two orange parcels from Woolham to JPA, and then the blue parcel from JPA to Woolham. And in consideration of this, Woolham Company will pay $97,200 for that difference in size and price, based on the appraisal. In addition, as part of this exchange agreement, Woolham will be constructing 35 parking stalls that will be shared with the park project, as well as assisting in the construction of a storm sewer, storm sewer improvements, and as well as landscaping related to the park drive. The city will also agree then to provide 3,000 cubic yards of flood storage for a potential redevelopment or potential expansion of that project. So if you want to ask questions now, or we can move on to Wayne and Brandon, so that they can talk about these agreements for...
I think this needs to be turned on.
I think there are a couple of questions, brief questions, and then we'll move on to him.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate you being here and everyone that signed up behind you. So just so that it may be easier for us and the public to follow along, I know that Mr. Landis said this, we see this as one project, but it clearly is Block Four and Block Five. So there are a number of items here. Can you indicate which have to do with Block Four?
Absolutely.
And which have to do with Block Five?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And that was a part I skipped over in the interest of time, so thank you for bringing me back to that. So Items 6K, 6L, 6M, 6N, and 6O, these are the items regarding the redevelopment agreement resolution, the CIP amendment resolution, the bond ordinance, as well as the purchase of the garage land from the JPA and the bond issuance. Those are all related to the Block Four project. Then the 6P through 6S relate to the Block Five project, and that's the real property exchange between Cotswold Management and JPA, the purchase agreement for parks, the dedication of the park land, and the CIP resolution.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next presenter.
Do you want me to work this?
One quick question.
While we're getting set up, Councilman...
You talked about the flood retention or detention there. Does that help the overall area reduce the area that's in the flood plain?
I am not the flood expert, but as I understand it, by putting some of the flood storage capacity in for the potential expansion of Woolham into the park, that reduces some of the flood plain issue in the rest of South Haymarket. So we're putting the flood storage in the park rather than on the street or with other projects. They would not otherwise be able to construct according to the building permit without providing flood storage somewhere, and so that will... Am I answering your question, John?
You generally are, and I just wondered maybe in this next week, if you could get information to me on what the impact is to the surrounding areas, because it sounds like it may be very beneficial, because we've tried to get more and more land out of the flood plain. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Wayne Mixdorf, Parking Services. The image you have here is of the proposed parking garage on the westernmost parcel of Block Four. As Hallie mentioned earlier, it will be designed to 700 stalls. It will be approximately, it'll be six levels, and it'll have approximately a footprint of 46,375 square feet. The design of the facility will be consistent with the existing West Haymarket parking garages, red, green, and blue, including the exterior lighting and the color accents. The anticipated budget for the garage is $14 million. The budget includes the site acquisition costs of $900,000. The appraised value of the site's $1.8 million, so this is 50% of the appraised value, which is basically an acknowledgement that both the JPA and the city will receive value from the construction of the garage and that we're partners in this project. Construction will be financed with $13 million in parking bonds and the million-dollar payment aid to construction from the developer.
All right, so you have a bond ordinance also, I'm sorry, Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director for the City.
Thank you.
You have a bond ordinance on the agenda tonight for $49.88 million. It's $28 million in new funding and $21.88 million in refunding bonds. We're recommending a change in tax status of the bonds from tax-exempt bonds to taxable bonds. So currently with, when tax law was restructured in, what was that, 2017, it doesn't allow for advanced refundings anymore for tax-exempt bonds. So to refund the current outstanding 2011, 2012 bonds, we need to refund them as taxable bonds. And also one thing that's a benefit of that is economic development generally acquires flexibility for parking arrangements. Tax-exempt bonds have limited use of what you can utilize for private-type use, for lease arrangements agreements with those parking garages. So it's generally limited to about 10% of the total bond. So by issuing taxable bonds, we'll be able to have more flexibility in issuing those economic development agreements moving forward into the future. In addition, we're also going to save approximately 5% for the bonds that we're estimating at this time. In addition, there's a change in the bonds and how they're backed. So prior, these were parking revenue bonds, so by revenue bonds, I mean that they're typically backed by the fees that are generated by the parking system. State law did allow for those revenue bonds to also be backed with our highway allocation funds. And then as part of those revenue bonds, you typically have debt service coverage requirements. So we have one in the covenants of 2.0, and then also a debt reserve fund. Under Bond Counsel's current opinion, if we're backing parking funds with highway allocation funds, there's also a requirement statute that has to be backed by general obligation or property tax-backed bonds. So basically, what you would have is, in effect, a triple-backed bond. You would have, first and foremost, your parking revenues, and then it's backed by motor fuel tax, and then it's backed by property taxes. So the benefit of doing this would basically result in a higher rating, because we would essentially go from, we're currently at A+, and we would, we should be able to get a AAA rating, given the city's current rating status with our property tax. However, it still does have protections for the city. It has a 1.0 coverage ratio, so that means once the parking fund revenues, it nets out its operating expenditures, it has to have revenues left of that net that equal to the debt service requirements for the parking fund. So with that, I think Wayne's going to talk about the new bonds.
So this bond will contain $28 million in new funding. This, up to $14 million will be used for the Block Four parking garage, the one that we're talking about now. But also, $6.6 million is for the acquisition of the properties on Block 65. That includes the parking garage at 1318 M Street, the land that that garage sits on, and the two surface parking lots that are also associated with that. And then there's $7.4 million for the purchase and the renovation of the Eagle parking garage. And now, all of those items are in the current CIP, or they've been previously approved by council, with the exception of the Eagle Garage parking renovation, which will be upcoming.
So Wayne hit on the new money piece, so I'm going to go back to the refinancing piece and talk to you a little about that. So right now, you have bonds outstanding of $23.99 million. So we're going, we're recommending refunding the 2011 and 2012 bonds. GFOA generally recommends governments have somewhere in their debt policy, somewhere 3% to 5% for savings when you're looking at refunding bonds. And I said earlier that we're currently at about 5% is what we're estimating. So the 2011 bond has estimated savings of $1.3 million. However, the 2012 bond has a negative $100,000. Now, we don't typically recommend that we would refund, and based on a negative savings, but in order to call one of the bonds, you have to call both of them because of the revenue restrictions that are in place with the bond covenants. So you have to call both of the bonds at the same time to refund them. So the net, we still have a total net of $1.2 million in savings estimated between the two, which is 5%, which is, you know, right around the range where we want to be that GFOA recommends for best practices. The savings from the bonds are, remain flat and structured flat over the 12 years, and we're not, there's nothing that changes the original term that the bonds were scheduled to be paid off in, so they remain within the term of the original bonds.
Councilman Kemp has a couple of questions.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Kaufman, you just mentioned the second bond, the 2012. I thought you said verbally there'd be a cost of $100,000, but it was $1 million, is it not?
Cost of $100,000. So a net between the two, we would have $1.2 million in estimated savings.
Well, I had written down that the savings on the 2011 was $2.3 million.
No, it should be $1.3 million.
Okay.
And then $100,000 cost.
Yeah, the other day, when we had our pre-council, I think you'd said some other numbers. And then, Mr. Mixdorf, in all of this financing, you've got the purchase of the Sharp Building area and then the Eagle, and the improvements on Eagle or whatever, but you don't have anything on the ultimate improvements on the Sharp, we'll call it that Sharp Block. Where will that come from to do that renovation, because that's going to be substantial?
Well, you're talking about the proposed parking garage for Block 65. Yes. Currently, well, we own the property that that garage would go to, and that financing for that garage is currently under review. We have exercised a great deal, or in this project, we'll be exercising a great deal of our bonding capacity, and so we now need to take time to step back, figure out what our financial plan is going to be moving forward for that garage. And also, it makes sense for us to seek a development partner for a potential larger project for that site. That's a substantial parcel of property now in an area that is ripe for redevelopment, so we'd certainly like to be able to partner with someone for a much larger project. So it's going to take us some time to figure out exactly what the financial picture is for that.
So you're shifting direction somewhat from when the Sharp building, excuse me, the Sharp Lot was proposed for parking and all, because at that point, you were allocating improvements and everything, and it sounds like you've shifted that now to Block Five.
We have, we have a little bit. We still do have the parking assets on Block 65, which we are operating and will continue to operate, and also across the street at 1330 N Street, the Eagle Garage. That garage will be taken out of service and fully renovated, so essentially, we'll have a new structure on that location. And while that is replicating parking spaces that are already in service, they're in very bad shape and would be going out of service in the very near future if we didn't take this step. So that'll solidify the parking capacity in that part of town in the short term, giving us the opportunity to be able to move forward with our plans for Block 65.
And then the Eagle parking structure, we would have for about 30 or 32 years, since it's a land lease?
That's correct. The land lease still has 32 years to run on it, seven years in the current iteration, and then one more extension for 25. And we're going to be renovating this garage so that it will last approximately that long.
Thank you, Councilman. Gentlemen, anything else you'd like to add?
Lynn Johnson will be next to speak to the park component.
Then we will listen to Mr. Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lynn Johnson. I think Parks and Recreation, I am going to be speaking about the proposed park and plaza on Block Five. I think, as the city council knows, because these are documents that the city council has been involved in adopting, a park, a neighborhood park in the South Haymarket area has been in the city planning documents for nearly 15 years at this point. It was included in the 2005 Downtown Master Plan, and most recently, in the 2018 Downtown Master Plan that was adopted in December of last year. The vision for, excuse me, this new 6.2-acre park includes a plaza anchoring the south end of Canopy Street, a trail connection, a needed trail connection between N Street and J Street, and what that will do is connect the Jamaican North Trail to the Haymarket and beyond. Downtown Neighborhood Park, Hallie said this evening that there are 4,000 residences either existing or planned in this area. When we look at neighborhood parks in the suburban areas of the community, we anticipate that a neighborhood park is going to serve about 3,500 residences. So certainly, we're in the area of the community, and we have enough demand here to support a downtown neighborhood park. We want to do something beyond a downtown neighborhood park, though. We want to add some community amenities that will make this a destination for some community residents, and that will also enhance the experience of visitors to our community who may be staying in our hotels or coming to this area. And so we're proposing to include a multipurpose cement lawn, an interactive water feature, and a train observation area. And I'm certain that you know that any time we talk about the possibility of a downtown park, a downtown dog park comes up, and we've included that in this project as well. We asked, actually, I'm going to back up one. We asked Olson earlier this year to develop a preliminary master plan, and we're really interested in trying to determine the configuration for the park boundary, particularly as it related to the surrounding parcels. In this image, you see what's identified as a redevelopment project concept, and you also see the J.A. Woolham Company. So we wanted to make sure that as we were configuring these parcels, that they fit together in a way that would accommodate, in particular, the development and the expansion of those two properties. This is just a preliminary master plan at this point. We anticipate engaging the community this summer in review and seeking their advice and guidance about what activities and how they'd like to see this site developed. The current cost estimate is about $9 million. That includes about $1.5 million for an endowment for future capital repair and replacement costs, but I want to reiterate that this is a preliminary estimate. The final cost estimate will be based on the final master plan that's developed as a result of the community engagement process. The funding that's been identified to date, the city council has heard, we announced this about a week ago, that the J.A. Woolham Foundation is providing an extremely generous lead gift of $1 million to initiate this project, and I, again, want to reiterate our... this project, and I, again, want to reiterate our sincere appreciation to John Woolham and Kathy Rustermeier for that gift. That gift has a, has a contingency that needs to be satisfied, and that is that the city needs to at least match that. And one of the actions that is before the city council, excuse me, this evening, is approval of a purchase agreement of the future parkland from the Lincoln Parks Foundation for 1.1 million dollars. And the source of those funds are advanced acquisition funds. Those funds have accumulated over time as urban development has sold unneeded city property, and we are now proposing to use these funds to further community development and economic development in this area by using the funds for this purchase. When those funds arrive at the Parks Foundation, they will be earmarked for a dedication of the park. So essentially, this is helping to build the funding that we will have for the development of the park site. The West Haymarket JPA, at their meeting last week, approved a combination of 597,200. The 500,000 will be used for park improvements, the 97,200 will be used for infrastructure of failed storm sewers in this area that needs to be, be addressed. And then you heard this evening that there's about 763,000 of TIF identified from the Block Four project that is earmarked for, for the plaza improvements. So that brings us to a total of about 3.5 million dollars at this point. There are three primary partners in this project, and the way that we look at this, we truly believe this is a win-win-win project. The JPA, in its role as fostering economic development in this area, sees the value and the benefit of a park and plaza, and so it would like to see a park and plaza happen in this area. But the JPA doesn't develop parks, and it also doesn't manage parkland. So they, last week, transferred ownership of the parkland to the Parks Foundation. The Parks Foundation's role in this is that they partner with us and they raise money for parks. So the expectation in, in that transfer in part was the Park Foundation would step up and, and be part of the fundraising for this effort. And then, as of the, the proposed action tonight, the, the land will transfer then to the city, and the city will then be responsible for doing what it does, which is develop, construct, and manage parkland. And the other thing that is being asked this evening, and it's part of the, the transfer of the land from the Parks Foundation to the city, is that this land be dedicated to park use in the future. So we're essentially assuring the community that in the future, this land, as it's being acquired by the city, will be used as parkland. And unless there's questions, I'm going to introduce Kent Seacrest and let him talk.
Let's go to Mr. Seacrest.
Good evening. I'm Kent Seacrest, representing Canopy Park LLC, who are the developers on Block Four tonight. The principals are Nellnet and Speedway Properties. Attending tonight, if you have questions that I can't answer, are Clay Smith, Craig Smith, and Adam Criswell as well. Well, where do I start on describing Block Four redevelopment project? First of all, it's a public-private partnership with many building components. Public parking garage and three buildings, all integrated, master planned together and schematically planned to come together to maximize land, open space, building design, and energy efficiency, while minimizing costs, because that's been a key to this equation. We share vertical circulation, stairs and elevators, we're sharing motor vehicle and pedestrian access points, share DEC energy systems, share utilities, and even share waste and recycling collection points to make all the parts come together. I describe this as kind of the ultimate PPP, public-private partnership. First key partnership is Nellnet and Speedway coming together, two quality Lincoln firms that strongly believe in reinvesting in their communities and do it on a daily basis. The second partnership is the Speedway-Nellnet team teaming up as a for-profit with a nonprofit, the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation. I've never seen that mix come together, but we have it in this project, which is very exciting. Not only are they teaming up, but they're going to run a condominium association together and actually manage the key components of care and upkeep in a collaborative way through a condominium association. The next partner is the private and the nonprofit teaming up with the West Haymarket JPA and the District Energy to help acquire the site, solve the environmental remediation issues on the site, construct Canopy Streetscape, and provide the DEC chilled and steam together. Finally, but not least, is the City of Lincoln, who's a partner at coordinating the short term and the monthly off-street parking and on-street parking in this area. Some call it a public-private partnership. I tend to call it a public, 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 private, private, nonprofit partnership. Six entities working together, which is, I think, a very efficient model and one that has led to a lot of efficiency, but a lot of legal documents. I think this might be the longest redevelopment agreement we've done yet, but again, the law department, the law department did a great job of working in a collaborative model on a lot of complex issues of all these partnerships coming together. And what the legal documents tend to do, which we need to keep track of, is we have affordable housing. We have a mixed income project, as well as a mixed use project, which I think is very exciting. But I think the thing that gets me the most excited about this project is my fear all along, north of O Street Bridge, you know, we saw the wonderful Haymarket, and we saw the wonderful West Haymarket. I was very fearful, how do we, that bridge is a barrier. How do we overcome that? And I think through a lot of talented architectural design, we have a very dynamic Block Four and a Block Five, and I'm not worried about the O Street Bridge like I used to be. This project has sought coming in with an urban design that will keep the two areas' success going and marching to the south. I'd like to thank all the people involved, but that would take too long. But I want to thank one entity more than any tonight, which is kind of weird. I'd like to thank the city clerk, who put together the longest agenda I've ever seen, and as far as I can tell, got it right. So with that, we'd be glad to answer your questions, or we'll wait for the rest of the presentation. I think Darrell is next.
Mr. Nauman?
Good evening. I'm Darrell Nauman. I'm with the Haymarket Development Corporation. The community knows the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation through events like the farmer's market that begins on Saturday, and the chocolate lovers fantasy, holidays in the Haymarket, and lots of events. But we also have a long history of providing affordable housing in downtown Lincoln and the Haymarket. The historic Hardy Building across the street from the post office was purchased in 1986, and the historic Granger Building was purchased in 1991 through the leadership of people like John Camp, Lou Shields, Larry Small. And although Larry Small was not a founding member, he joined the, the Lincoln Haymarket Association and has been with us ever since and has guided this project. It was people, it was their belief that a successful revitalization of the Haymarket depended not only on just refurbishing buildings, but it had to include housing for all people. The Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation has been providing affordable housing for the last three decades. That commitment continues today through our partnership with Speedway and Nellnet to build 82 apartment units as part of the new, of the new development on Block Four. Half of those units will be reserved for families with incomes of 60% of medium income or lower. This affordable housing is only made possible by the Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation and the city working together to match the low-income housing resources, TIF fees, and our private funding. That strategic investment of approximately 522,000 is leveraged into a 13 million dollar project that provides housing for a broad range of Lincoln families. We share the belief that as Lincoln grows, all people in our community need to share in the opportunities that the growth provides. Our success with the Hardy and Granger Buildings provides downtown and the Haymarket our neighborhoods of opportunity for everyone. This new project is another affirmation of both the public and the private sector commitment to that core principle. We're also very pleased to see the new neighborhood park directly across the street from this new project. Lincoln Housing, Lincoln Haymarket Development Corporation was deeply involved in the new Downtown Master Plan that called for the new park. It will clearly benefit the residents, not only on our block, but throughout downtown and beyond. I want to thank city staff, Nellnet, Speedway, and the tireless effort of the Lincoln Development Corporation for their hard work on both of these projects, and we're ready and eager to help make this vision a reality.
Thank you, Mr. Nauman. Questions from the council? Thank you again. Who's next? Is there more presentation?
Sorry for the delay. Good evening. I'm John Woolham. I live at 2436 Sheridan Boulevard, and I came in 1979 to teach engineering at the University of Nebraska. And we did government-funded research and graduate students in programs like this, and we came up with an idea for an instrument that would work in the lab, and we got it going, and sort of bootlegged it and going, and it worked, and then it looked like this is an opportunity. Students were looking for jobs, so the students and I started this company, and, and it has grown. We thought we'd saturate the market in two or three years, and then we found new uses for it, and then we made it faster, and it's really taken off. So, and now, we, we sell instruments all over the world. We sell to the, all high-tech. It's a technique called ellipsometry, where a light beam reflects from a surface, and you analyze what happened to the beam after it hit the surface, and you can do diagnostics on about every high-tech product you can think of. So it's, it's surprising, actually, some of the places where our instruments end up. For example, we have agreements with large California companies that sell to the whole world of semiconductor industry, so we have computer chips when they're made, they're inspected many, many, many times, and they use by ellipsometers in order to make sure that the manufacturing process is, is working. And so, as you might guess, this takes a lot of highly educated people. We've had, I'm still teaching, it's my 40th year, and, and so we have a really strong connection with the university, and almost all of our employees are either university graduates or from the state of Nebraska in education, and we have 28 engineers, 10 of them have master's degree and eight of them have PhDs. We have 21 technicians, all but two came from Southeast Community College in Lincoln, one came from IIT in Omaha, and one came from abroad. And we have 13 people that are in business and accounting, so these are all good people to have in the city of Lincoln. We've been growing, as I said, for 32 years, and so we need more room. We've got, this is our fourth building in, in the downtown area that we've gone to. We started in the peanut butter factory, and we were there for a few years and went to a couple more. So we've been growing all this time, but we need more space, and the way it is right now, we're, we're hemmed in by the former where the tracks would go, and, and then there's the parking lot to the north of us, we can't build on it because it's, wouldn't be able to connect to our present building, and it's really perfect for the city, because the city can really use this for their redevelopment. And so the, what it is, is we're buying from the city, and the city is buying from us, and it's wonderful, because now we'll have a rectangle of, of property area that'll make it just perfect for expansion. We had started on the architectural design of a building that would fit inside this strange border that we now have, but so I'm very happy we've come along to the point where we are right now. So just, oh, the park, I wanted to say, obviously, it's a, it'll be a big advantage for our company and its potential for growth. And the park, I'm very, very in favor of. The Woolham Foundation has two purposes, one is in education and one is in land conservation. We help on many, many projects in Nebraska and outside of Nebraska, and it's just something they do, it's in their heart. I really feel that people need open space, a place to play, a place to just recreate and have a good time and be outdoors, and you've got a lot of new people coming in downtown, and this will be good for them. Thank you, and thanks to all the hard people who've worked really hard on this.
Mr. Woolham, thank you. Questions?
That's right, I got to stay for questions. Sorry.
Okay, I don't think there are any at the moment. Thank you again.
I'd like to introduce Maggie Stuckey next, the executive director.
For a second, Dr. Woolham, question?
I spoke too soon.
No, I had the pleasure of meeting with you a couple of years ago and get the whole tour, and as I recall, 85 or 90% of your manufactured ellipsometers are sold internationally?
That's correct. Well over half are outside the USA, yeah. Nebraska's, the only, as much as we have are at the university, and those are at our cost, so everything is from outside the state.
Thank you. Thank you again. Ms. Stuckey's next, something you said?
Maggie. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Maggie Stuckey with the Lincoln Parks Foundation. I'm really excited to be here tonight and be part of this project. I want to convey on behalf of our board that on April 10th, the board unanimously approved our engagement in this process and the various agreements that the foundation has been associated with, and they'd like me to express that they are excited to partner with you and, and make this really become a reality. The gift from the J.A. Woolham Foundation and the city's contribution is an amazing opportunity to really jump-start this project, and we want to do more, we want to challenge the community to do more. We know we can do it. We're going to try to raise an additional million dollars yet this summer. We have several conversations that are already underway. Everyone is really excited about making this park, again, that's been on the radar for so long, make it a reality. The public funds, in our perspective, show that the city is serious about doing this project and doing it right. Often, the donors ask us, how is the city involved? What are they doing? And to have an answer right from the beginning and be able to move the process along with the donors is, is really fantastic. So, again, we're excited about this project, we're sensing the energy already, and we appreciate your consideration and action this evening.
Thank you. Questions, council?
Yeah. Turn it over to Todd Ogden. Todd, I believe is next, Todd Ogden.
Are we just going to work our way down? Todd, come on up.
Todd Ogden, Downtown Lincoln Association. I am last, so I will be fast. I just also want to convey that our Board of Directors, on April 23rd, did unanimously vote to approve both of these projects, and we're thrilled with the master plan. We just adopted this, and we already have two catalyst projects and one council meeting moving forward, so things are going fast. We're going to need another master plan here really quickly if we move at this pace. Really, overall, just in general, to take a step back from the details, downtown's growing, we've seen it grow, and one key thing we look for at DLA is how do we get everybody to work together? And one key way is to bring more people downtown, and both of these projects, I believe, will do just that. We'll have dog parks, we'll have affordable housing, and those are two really key factors that we get. In any meeting that we've ever had, that's something that's always brought up. Our social media, every time we do a dog post or an affordable housing post, that by far is our number one click item. So, yeah, that's our click bait that we have. Anytime we need some clicks, we put some dogs up there. So, in general, it does show we have a ton of enthusiasm for both these projects, and to have them developed together, Block Four and Five, and bring families downtown, that's a win for all of downtown, because we're not sucking people away from other parts of downtown, which, again, we need to look for ways to help bring everybody together. And we're just extremely excited, again, for both Block Four and Block Five, and welcome any questions that you may have for us.
Questions for Mr. Ogden? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, we are in a public hearing. Are there others in the chamber that would like to speak on these agenda items?
Hi, my name is Dustin Antonello. That's D-U-S-T-I-N-A-N-T-O-N-E-L-L-O, and we're located at 620 North 48th Street here in Lincoln. The Lincoln Business Associate, Independent Business Association supports many elements of the redevelopment plans for Block Four and Block Five in the West and South Haymarket. For example, the addition of planned affordable housing units to downtown will help offset the rising housing costs in Lincoln. However, we do have some concerns about how these projects are being financed. For one, it seems like the West Haymarket Joint Public Agency will be committing funds to the, to these projects that otherwise could be used for debt retirement. The four- The $475,000 the West Haymarket JPA is donating to the Block 4 project is being characterized as a surplus, but in reality, it represents funds that could be used to pay down the arena bonds earlier. The same is true for the $600,000 the JPA is kicking in for the Block 5 project. The occupation tax that was imposed on restaurants and bars, hotels rooms, and rental vehicles to pay off bonds has brought in far more than expected, but it does not seem like the city is making a concerted effort to use these surplus funds to retire these bonds earlier and end the occupation tax. It is also disconcerting that the JPA is just giving land away to the Parks Foundation to build the new downtown park. The JPA already lost money on this land when it agreed to a land swap with South Canopy LLC. The land that was purchased for the future park costs $500,000 more than land that was sold to South Canopy LLC. The city, in turn, has agreed to pay $1.1 million for the land, but that's going to the Parks Foundation, not the JPA. Leva also has concerns about the overall cost of the park. The park is estimated to cost $9 million, yet only $3.5 million has been set aside for the project. The implication is that the Parks Foundation will raise the remaining funds, but this will be a huge undertaking for the foundation. The Parks Foundation has already been tasked with raising $1 million to match the $1 million challenge grant it received from the city's cash reserves in last year's budget. Add another $5.5 million on top of that for the new park, and all of a sudden, the Parks Foundation is on the hook for raising $6.5 million over the next few years. Leva believes the plans for the park should be scaled back to be more aligned with the funds that have already been secured for the park. Some of the more expensive amenities being planned for the park, such as the dog park, the interactive water feature, fitness equipment, and trail connections, could be considered as more funds from the Parks Foundation become available. Otherwise, we are concerned that the city will be forced to make up the difference with general funds if the donations from the Parks Foundation do not materialize. Thank you, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Antonello. Questions from the council? Thank you very much again, I appreciate your testimony. Are there others in the chamber that would like to speak on these agenda items? Okay. Pardon? Thank you, Councilman Christensen. Mr. Landis, with any of your presenters' like rebuttal? Take a few minutes to wrap some things up?
Good evening again, Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks Recreation. We certainly understand the concern about the scope of fundraising, but I would let the council know that this doesn't scare us, we've done this before. Union Plaza was about a $4.5 million campaign, as I remember. Centennial Mall was about a $6.5 million campaign, so, and this community has been and continues to be extremely generous. As we develop the plans for the park, we will, we will develop in a way that it can be phased, as was suggested. We'll want to get the basic improvements in place initially, and then we have the opportunity to add the amenities over time. That's the benefit of a good master plan, is that you've got a vision that you can work for, toward over time, and it can definitely be phased as the funds come in. So, like I say, I should let Maggie say this, but we're not concerned about this at all. We're very excited about it, and I would say that we really have a great start on what I think will be a very successful fundraising effort.
Questions? You ready for, Councilman Gaylord Baird would like to ask?
Just have a quick question about environmental mitigation, given that this has been railroad tracks, and has all that work been completed prior to this, or will that have to be part of the development of the park?
My understanding is that the part, the site is now prepared for development as a park. We'll have to take into consideration what, the condition of some of the soil, for example, if we're doing footings or if we're digging down into that, we need to take that into consideration.
Dogs, digging.
And, yeah, there's about, where the, where the dog run will be, there's about a three-foot soil cap there, so those dogs have to do some serious digging to get down to it, so...
If you take a look at this space, you'll see that the further north you are, the lower the land, and that's because we dug out the dirty dirt. Pretty expensive, but we did that, which is why it's a good place for flood storage. But, as you move further south, there's an upswing in the land, and that's because we ran out of the desire to dig out dirty dirt, and we put clean dirt on top. That's, that's an entirely acceptable use of space to have that be a park. The development location, which is to the further north, that's on land that, in fact, is appropriate for development and the building of a building. But when you go south, you're looking at not disturbing essentially the grass that's there, or disturbing the weeds, but replacing it with grass. But it's in the space that is capped for the kind of usage that you have here, which means, I think, it's an efficient use of the space.
Other questions for these testifiers in their rebuttal? Thank you very much. So where are we now? We're ready to move on to?
We conclude our public hearing, we can move into the voting session.
That sounds great, I like that.
Do you want to take a break?
No.
I think...
Just for John?
I think keep going is what everyone, yeah.
Okay.
I hear one person that says keep going, so we're gonna go with that.
Okay.
Majority rule.
Sounds good. Item 7A is text amendment 19002, application of the Country Club to amend Section 27.63.130 subsection F of the LMC to remove the reference to temporary structures introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second?
Have a motion by Councilman Eskridge, second by Councilman Raybold. Guys, we're gonna plow ahead with our agenda, if you guys would be a little bit respectful and move it outside, I, we'll celebrate, thank you. Motion by Eskridge, second by Raybold. Discussion. Hearing done, would you call the roll?
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. 7B is change of zone 19008, application of Dial Salt Creek, for a change from H3 Highway Commercial to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business and AG Agriculture on property generally located at North 27th and Husker Circle, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Christensen. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Item 7C is use permit 19003, application of Dial Salt Creek, to allow a residential healthcare facility for up to 762 persons and/or up to 270,000 square feet of commercial floor area, with a waiver to building height on property generally located at North 27th and Husker Circle, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eskridge, second by Camp. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next is street and alley vacation 19004, application of West Haymarket JPA to vacate the north-south 10-foot-wide alley which extends from the north line of N Street on property generally located at 660 N Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Eskridge, second by Raybold. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next is change of zone 19006, application of Bill Langdon for a change from O3 Office Park to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business on property generally located at Highway 2 and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Christensen, second by Eskridge. Discussion, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Lastly, is the appeal of Tim Gergen on behalf of Dory Inc. of Planning Commission's approval of use permit 132C to amend use permit 132B to add six commercial lots with an increase of approximately 47,200 square feet of commercial floor area at Highway 2 and Pine Lake Road, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Christensen, second by Camp. Discussion, please call the roll.
We did have a motion to amend, number one?
I'm sorry?
To adopt, to accept a substitute resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Christensen, second by Gaylord Baird. Discussion of the substitute amendment?
Yes, this is to make provisions for access, an access drive for land located directly west of the proposed development, and to define obligations regarding construction of a traffic signal, and at the full access intersection with Pine Lake Road.
Discussion, council? Do we need a moment? Nope. Okay, we have a motion by Christensen, second by Gaylord Baird, to amend and add a substitution. Ready to vote? Call the roll on the motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
I think we already have a motion, second, not the first one.
Now we're on to the main motion.
I'm ready, I think we already have a motion, second, we just need to call the roll.
Yep.
Please call.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through I. Ordinances first reading are items 9A through H.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move that we remove from the agenda this time items 9B through H.
9B through H?
11B through E.
Excuse me, excuse me, not 9, sorry.
11B through E.
Yes. Right.
You want to withdraw those?
Withdraw those, 11A is gonna be addressed shortly.
So 11B through 11E, bravo through echo.
Correct.
Now's a motion, it needs a second, please.
Second.
Motion by Christensen, second by Lamb.
And the purpose of this is to clear the agenda of anything that we have been either working on or delayed working on, so that the new council, the new mayor can take those things up and bring them back to the next council as they see fit. And I've been told by Planning Department that this is good with them, and keeping 11A on, because they have some action they want to take.
Councilman Christensen, I appreciate what you're doing, I'm a little concerned about the timing, is anyone else concerned? We still have a few more weeks before a new council is seated, could things be added back to the pending list?
Sure. If someone has a reason to bring them forward?
Bring it back, though, you've got the process of re-advertising, so I don't know that you can get on.
Several weeks before it actually would be heard to then be put on?
This is typical.
Okay, yeah, this has been done in the past.
All right, I'm satisfied. Are there other council concerns or questions or discussions?
I see the planning directors here, if he just wants to come up and...
Good evening, David Carey with the Planning Department.
Do you have a date in mind for 11A? Should we move that to date certain, or, and are you okay with the other items that are under your purview being removed?
Yeah. Excuse me.
I know they're wanting to come back towards the end of May, but I hesitate to put a date certain, in case things are still fluid.
11A, we are working with the applicant, it appears will be identifying that for June 17th. We are on the precipice of having that finalized, but that's something that, leaving it on for now is what we want to do, so that we can give it that date certain. And the other item that is of direct consequence to the Planning Department is 11D, that is that subarea plan that we have put on indefinite pending. There are processes underway to work on that. We will be, effectively what this will do is have us just go back through the process, which we expected to do anyways, mainly because we expect some changes in that plan as we move it back through the process, so I'm okay with that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other, Councilwoman Raybold?
Just if you could please clarify again, the items that you want to be deleted from the pending list?
11B through E, so the only item will remain is 11A.
I think we're ready to call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then?
I think we're ready for...
Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone session. Come on up.
Yes. You'll, five minutes, and we'll give you a one-minute warning when you have one left.
Okay. I think there should be a law that motorists and their passengers cannot see past bicycles cussing them out and yelling at them to get on the sidewalk for several reasons. Bicycles have a right to bike on the street, and it is illegal to bike on the sidewalk downtown anyways. Originally, paved roads are for bikes, not cars. Bikes are better than cars in many ways. People's waistlines, wallets, the world. Cars cost more to purchase, gas up, maintain, insure, wash, license, repair, pay taxes, obviously customize, et cetera. This will be the first generation of kids that, on average, will die a tenth year younger than the elders, from sitting in cars in front of the idiot TV box playing video games and sitting at work. I can haul most anything I want on my bike, because it has a rear rack, two baskets, very bright headlight and taillight, two water bottle holders, a bell, vendors, a bell sound system, not even very car has, GPS tracking, which a lot of cars also do not have. Motor vehicles, mostly cars, cause I'm many Americans' guns, which the government's outlaw, contrary to our second amendment rights. But I would like to see cars outlawed, and instead, a world-class, nationwide mass transit system placed in a place like Europe. I have a sister in Barcelona who bikes and takes mass transit everywhere. All my dad's income went to pay for his first car. The fact that he owns two cars now, because he obviously stupid has two residents, because he picked the wrong college major and career, and is now working full-time at 68, are the top two reasons he cannot retire. Bicycling helps my deep depression that is so bad, four or five people have wrongly called the police, thinking I'd kill myself since I was fired last July 17th, the worst day of life, but even they, including one of my best friends from high school, refused to be my friend, even though loneliness is a bigger risk factor than early death and obesity, diabetes, heart disease, which lonely people also have. There have been 127 bike accidents in Lincoln and 105 injuries last year. I also have neuropathy in my feet, and I still might have a bad limp, which my therapist thinks could be psychosomatic, so it's easier to bike than walk.